I'd like to please call to order the budget hearing for Celine area schools for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six oh six P M. If everyone could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here early for the budget hearing. This is our first opportunity for public comment, and I am seeing no public comment forums. So we will move forward with approval of agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Support Susan.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero, which brings us to Miranda Owsley with our budget presentation, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we'll get it started. The very first slide here shows kind of a little bit of a what and why or a background. Our fiscal year as a school in Michigan runs from July to June every year. And if you'll see on the picture there, it kind of illuminates the fact that the state's fiscal year, which gives a large percentage of our revenue on their general fund, runs actually September through August. So there's kind of this differential that we always deal with every year. And this hearing, as well as adopting our budget before July one, and it doesn't give us authority to adopt our final budget after July thirtieth, is all legal requirements that we're required to do. So those are kind of why we're here and doing this. The action that we're actually taking tonight in the regular meeting is our F Y twenty-two final budget and as well as our F Y twenty-three original budget. And then, and you'll see in some of the slides, it's basically reference material only, is the next two years. It's a big big jump because of a lot of our one-time funding that we wanted to really play out those next two years to see the difference in where those time out. So this one, I always like to start our presentations with this because instead of people in our office, we deal with a lot of funding and it's a very complicated topic of talking about school finance. And I feel like this org chart kind of gives a very good holistic view of things that we deal with in our department. So obviously, we spend a lot of time talking about our general fund, but as you'll see on this slide, it's only one part of all that we do. We also talk about special revenue funds, community ed, food service, the consortium, the CTE programs in the high school, and also our student activity accounts, as well as our debt funds, capital projects, and multiple ones in there. So we kind of are adapting all of those throughout tonight's evening. So a little bit just talking about how our general fund gets our revenue, and this slide is it stays very similar from year to year. Our most of it is funded by the state, intermediate becomes, things are collected at the I S D level and then flowed to our school district, mostly in our special ed, Act eighteen dollars. Local is mostly taxes, but there's other little things that come in to the district, pay-to-play, or gate receipts, or athletics are just two prime examples. And federal is mostly just grants that flow through to the district. So this document is called an L forty twenty-nine, and this is basically the document that goes out to each of our seven taxing authorities that are listed on there, Bridgewater, Freedom, Lowry, Pittsfield, City of Celine Township, and York Township. We put those out, and then they collect the tax bills and then comes back to us. So in in looking at this, the first arrow right there shows you that's our eighteen mils, that's the general fund operating dollars. So with that, you'll notice at the very bottom of the slide, that's collected on non-homestead. So you kind of think about second properties, businesses, things like that. If you only own your home, you have that homestead exemption, you don't actually pay on that eighteen mils. And the other really big point on this is you'll notice that it expires in December of two thousand and twenty-three. So that'll be another thing that we'll have to just renew that for another ten years, and that actually does go out to the voters to just renew. There's no changes, nothing needed to be done on it, other than just we need to renew it out another ten years. And so you'll see on a couple later slides of why that's so significantly financially important to us, even though it's just a simple renewal. The next portion, it is broken out. We have to legally break them out because of the, how our debt funds are set up, but this is a collection that we talk about, that eight mils. And so that debt is made up of those four components this year. Then we see that the sinking fund is that point three number, that's for the ongoing fixing kind of cost that's there. And then the recreation mill is that is kind of inside of our community ed department that's collected. You'll notice that these numbers continue to roll back. It's kind of what they call a headly rollback, but it's basically if our tax base grows larger than, you know, a calculated number, it holds that accountable, so it rolls it back so that it doesn't, you know, grow faster than than we're allowed. So then, just kind of focusing in on that state and local tax, because a lot of time we talk about the general fund and that local tax. It actually, the local tax doesn't change our general fund revenues. So what the state does is state sets a foundation allowance that they allocate to schools. So for example, I use last year's, this current year's foundation level, eight thousand seven hundred per pupil times, and certain number of pupils gets us to a number. That's what the state sets. So that's represented by that blue bar. Then we look down to all the taxing agencies, the seven ones I listed, then report out to the state what our taxable values are. And then the state assumes we will collect eighteen mils. Whether we do, whether we don't, they assume it, and that's what they assume that yellow bar is representing. Then the state will only give us the difference. So the state's sending us thirty-four million, even though they set the bar for that forty-two million. So the real key here is that if we don't collect that eight million, they don't give it to us. We just don't, we miss out on that eight million dollars. So when that renewal comes time and we're talking more about that in the ballot, it's a very significant thing to the district that we would be out that million if we did not collect that. So one of the things I want to talk to you before we go into the specific number slides are some of the assumptions that I used to create these next numbers. So if we look on the revenue side, and a straight roll-up, if I take the fifth grade class to sixth grade and move them up along there, we've seen kind of a loss in enrollment. So over these years, and staying on a conservative side, I've projected that a hundred student loss each of those years. For our foundation level, so again, it goes back to that differential between our fiscal year and the state's fiscal year. The state, we have to adopt a budget basically tonight before June thirtieth, but we don't, still don't know what seventy percent of our revenue is going to be because it's not established. The governor has put out their budget, the House and the Senate have all put out theirs, but it's not been, it's not a for sure thing yet. So this number is, I feel like, a very good number for our foundation. It is the governor's proposal currently, this four hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. And the next two years, I pulled that down. The state has a lot of one-time money, just as we do, and so I don't know that that is a sustainable number and is not a conservative estimate to keep going with that four hundred dollar per student number. The other pieces, that grants were adjusted, but then most of the other stuff, you'll see, I left pretty flat along the way. I wanted to really showcase the fact of our enrollment and the foundation level, really playing the fact of what that will look like over those years. So it really is doing conservative thing if we will see some reductions in our revenues. On the expense side, there was, last year, we settled the S E A, the teacher contract, and so that is putting people on the new salary schedule. And as well as those years, putting them down on the different steps that they would achieve. We know, it's a known fact of the fourteen lane changes for next year, as well as I predicted out the next two years, having ten lane changes. And so if you're not familiar with what lane changes are, it basically is on our teacher scale. We have bachelors and masters levels. And so a teacher can, as they achieve those requirements, and they can move over to the different salary schedules. And part of, as we replace teachers, and we have a younger staff too, that's part of that progression that we that we see throughout the salary schedule. I replaced twenty-one teachers, a lot of resignation or retirements, but also a couple resignations. And then the next two years, you'll see on that assumption slide, that I assumed no retirees or resignations. And I really wanted to show, what does it look like if we continue to roll up at the exact same pace? Will there be some retirements and resignations? Yes, there will, but I wanted to show kind of like, this is what our current state is if we just take what we have and roll forward. And you'll see in F Y twenty-three, coming up to our next school year, we have on, in this budget represents an attrition of two F T E at high school and two at the middle school, some retirements. And we're able to scheduling, we had seen some loss over the years of COVID, but yet felt comfortable with our revenues coming in and some one-time money that we could stay flat on our our staffing. But in terms of if we continue to lose those students, we were able to find some places where we could carve out some of those F T E savings. With ORS, they've already put out the, in that governor's budget, that there was no change. You'll see the other two years have a modest increase to the retirement system percentage that we pay on every dollar of our staffing. Healthcare, the same thing, kind of a more modest increase because right now it's kind of set, but we also have an increase then in that teacher contract as well, as well as we see just a general trend of our healthcare dollars in school continuing to increase. Staffing changes is kind of everyone that I know of at that time has been put in already. And then, as well as you'll see on, all the way out to F Y twenty-five, anything that was temporary and identified in our grants that could be removed is removed from there already. But as you can see, there's, I'll point out a couple of points in our one-time revenues on the next couple of slides. Two of the big things that I wanted just to point out was a significant increase to utilities. So our electricity, fuel, gas in the buses, the same thing as you might see in your homes and things like that. We see as a school, even parts to fix things and things like that, it was a significant, and so in this budget, that continues those at that high rate. I use our today's, you know, numbers to do that. So if we do see, you know, relief in those things and those costs go back down and it's not as significant, then those would be cost savings to those numbers that I've projected. But it really leaves those at a high rate in case that's where we stay. As well as the same thing we're seeing in our staffing, our staffing cost goes up, yeah, I see the same thing for our fiber internet consortium. There's a significant increase in that, and they have to staff to keep that countywide network fiber going. So this kind of breaks down, the one in the white, you'll see is the twenty twenty-one, so that was last year's actuals. And then the yellow is our current year budget ending this month. And then the blue is the one we're adopting, and like I said, the peach color and the green color are the two, just for reference of trying to play out as we roll off of some of the one-time money, what that that looks like. And you'll also notice that on the state sources, I've pulled out on the separate line item, pulled out any one-time things that are not reoccurring so that those showed out in a kind of a separate line item. And that's kind of, again, going off the assumptions page, if you look across the local sources, you'll notice that those dollars don't really change between those multiple projection years. And that's just kind of like I said, is showing the big two pieces of the state foundation level and enrollment are the changes that I wanted to make. Obviously, if state or the local taxes go up, then the state kind of comes down, but they kind of in balance stay with each other. So just kind of wanted to keep those similar. This is another one, before we switch over to the expenditure side, showing one of our our biggest revenues coming in is our foundation level. So that's in the blue and on the left-hand side of this this graph. And then on the right side is percentages of our ORS retirement rate. And this graph goes very far back in our history, but really kind of shows, they're two different scales, so one's dollars and one's percent, so they're not actually like exactly there, but you can see the trends. And you can see during those really difficult years of recession, that the line in the red is our percentage that we pay in retirement significantly increased, a big expense for schools. At the same time, the foundation, our revenues coming in, took a huge dip. And so you'll see that that, in the middle of that graph, they really cross over. So you see that trend was really negative for schools. And to be honest, at the very end, we're seeing our foundation level, if we're able to keep up with this foundational level, that's a great trend. That our ORS rate is starting to level off a little bit and not seeing these steep increases. So it's one of those things where the state predicts both of those, and so it will see how it goes. But if it's attainable, though, that's a great sign of the general trend. Here's one way to break out our general fund expenditures, and so we see a lot of our, percentage of our things goes directly into instructional programs, and then a lot of other little pieces of the pie to go, and all the things that support the whole the whole school. We see a lot of these stay pretty similar. They adjust a little bit from year to year, but this is a large portion of how our expenses fall. This is a different same numbers, but a different way to break down those categories. So this is basically, the salaries and benefits is what makes up eighty-seven percent of our expenditures in our general fund. And so the purchase services, supplies, materials, just make up a small one, but breaking down the same information in a very just different way to look at it. So a couple of things, I kind of talked a lot about these in my assumptions page, but you'll notice that the, on the expense side, it is assuming kind of a worst-case scenario as we go along and saying, if fuel stays higher, utilities stay high, all of our staffing continues, org goes up in that kind of realm, what would our our new tomorrow look like in two thousand and twenty-five? So you'll see quite a few of those changes that continue to trend to go up. So in general, the, on the revenue side, we said that was going to go down, and then the expenditure side going up. So it's kind of playing out that if we do nothing and sit back, this is what will look like in in future years. There is a lot, like I said, with the, there's a technology piece, so the consortium costs of the I S D was a very large one, the utilities and maintenance, as well as just staffing overall throughout the whole thing and all of the different raises on the different steps and percentages. So this kind of takes the revenue side and the expenditure side, and you'll notice I still copied back in the one-time lines. So I let, that's a little bit different from last time, as you'll see, I've left those in there at the top just for reference. And in the middle of the slide here, it's basically taking that yearly revenue minus the expense. So last year, our revenues were five million more than our expenditures were. And I'm predicting at the end of this year, that our revenues are going to be short by eighty-three thousand. So one of the big things to notice, and it's going to be very difficult in this year, these next three years, so the yellow, the blue, and the peach, is this one-time funding is how that it plays out. When can we actually recognize the different grants and things that go with the rules of the state and where things are approved and how they fall? If we're not able to recognize them in this year, then I would swing over to the blue. So if, there's a lot of play, we're in this unique scenario where we've never really had grants that go over this much since back in the day when they had our grants and things like that. We usually live within one year, and then we go to the next, and we live very much in this year. A lot of the COVID funding is that you can spend it on any expenditure all the way back to March of two thousand and twenty. So there'll be some recording of some expenses that have already happened. We've already accounted for them, they're in there, but those are going to be utilized to recognize revenue. So it gets quite complicated, and there's going to be a swing, but that's why I tried to look at the whole overarching, the whole time of those COVID grants, and then see where we would be coming out of that. And then we can plan ahead because that's quite far out there in the world we, the school world that we live in will, in two thousand and twenty-five will look different. We're going to make choices along that way. So looking ahead at that three million dollar deficit in that twenty-four, twenty-five, it's kind of also a worst-case scenario. If we do nothing and we let all these one-time expenditures fall off, we continue to lose kids, that's where we would be. So we have lots of time to make choices. It was kind of a very starting point and a very kind of worst-case scenario. All the expenditures kind of continuing to rise for our staffing levels, and then also loss of students and a lower foundation rate. And then at the very bottom, you can see the fund balance just basically taking the prior years where it leaves off and then rolling it forward to the next year. So see, even, we like to see a controlled kind of fall from from the one-time expenditures, but as we see, like, we still end up with a twelve point nine fund balance at the end of the two thousand and twenty-five year. So this is another slide that goes way back into Celine's history. It's a fund balance in terms of and the green is the predicted fund balance. So the blues in this slide are actuals, that's where we actually ended up at the end of each year. And so obviously, we see in the very last year where I've predicted revenues go down and our expenditures continue, that's a sharp decline. And so it's kind of one of those things, if we see and we did nothing about adjusting, if our enrollment continues to drop, that we would see that continue. But that's kind of where we are in that point of taking that, those and making that conversation so that we don't see a sharp decline and we kind of see us leveling off instead. So it's kind of a starting point, that three years in in the future, to make sure that we're starting to see that level off as we see the reality of the next three years happening. And then as well, we kind of spent a lot of time in the general fund, but these are all also the funds that you'll be approving tonight and parts of in part of the action item. So in general, a lot of these don't necessarily fall on the end of the June thirtieth timing, especially a lot of our capital projects, they span across the summer, so it doesn't necessarily make exact sense that they ended. A fund balance in bond is very different from our general fund, but we saw that we took in, you'll see the thirteen million that we ended last year's because we just sold the last series of that bond, and then the next two years, you see us playing out that we're spending that down on those planned projects for the next summer and some during the school year as well. And the same thing for the debt fund. You'll notice that our two thousand and sixteen refunding debt, that came off, but then the same time we sold our two thousand and twenty-one building in sight, our last series three of the past bond. So you'll see that even the one rolled off, another one kind of came in, as well as you'll see this year's compared to last year's, the old sinking fund that had the old uses, that also we played on that balance, and so that is no longer kind of on the books. And now we just have the new sinking fund with the new uses that got added in two thousand and eighteen. So any questions?
Thanks, Miranda. I know we have this on our regular agenda, but it's probably easier to ask questions or have comments while we're, while we're having her here.
So I just wanted to point out that the board received this on Monday, and it's sixty-five pages long. I personally was not able to review, review much in detail or ask anything in advance because Friday, our board packet was two hundred and twenty pages. So to be honest, I haven't been able to get all through it. You know, thank you for the broad summary on that. I appreciate that. And I'm wondering if the, when the finance committee has went over this.
We spent significant time on it. I mean, like, our entire time today.
We had our finance committee tonight, this evening before this meeting. In general, we're passing the two budgets. The other two budgets are there for reference, and as well as, we by law have to to pass something by June thirtieth. In general, too, then we can amend as many times as we want throughout the year. So that's something that we can bring back to the board if we feel like there's more amendments that need to be made. Because of that, a lot of times when we put out this budget that happens this time, the same thing, we don't know necessarily where where the state's going to align. And then if it comes in very different, student count comes in October, that's dictated, about ninety percent of our funding is based on who walks in the door, you know, in end of August and September. So we can amend those at any time, that we can put in refresh kind of like students, refresh who is still staffing-wise that goes in there. But this is a working document, and it's not a final, it's not an audit kind of concept where those are final numbers. It's basically, you know, a plan, a working document to kind of move forward to.
Yes, I understand. That'll probably change tomorrow, right?
Yeah, exactly.
But I will also follow that up by saying that, like, we regularly, as a finance committee, look into, you know, we talk a lot about bond, projects and dollars and what have you, but student enrollment is like the biggest driver of our budget, right? And it's something that we are regularly talking about as a team, right, and making sure that we're monitoring. We look into, we look into percentages, we look into making sure that our costs are consistent, and, but I mean, we regularly like, review and bring these things, and we have our finance director to thank for that, so.
Yeah, Susan, thank you for bringing that up, and, you know, I I felt a lot more comfortable after today's finance committee meeting, just being able to walk through all of the information and really felt like this is a conservative estimate. And that makes me feel, you know, better about moving forward and just comfortable with the numbers and where we are, with the understanding that we can revise as needed. So just wanted to mention that.
I was just going to mention, similarly, that in looking at this and in looking at previous budgets that you have provided to the board and revisions that are made throughout the year, I just appreciate that you take a conservative approach. One example today is that you are not anticipating any retirees or resignations in, not, not, not right now, but for the next two years. And so, and we know that that is is likely. So I think that right there, just to me, is one example of how you run a very conservative budget without making it feel so doom and gloom, and we're still able to maintain the excellence and and the programming for students. So I appreciated the presentation tonight, which answered a lot of my questions. In fact, I would write a question down and you would answer it. So thank you, and thank you for being on top of this, in addition to always being aware of like potential grants and other revenue sources that we can, that we can use to supplement some of these areas. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks to the finance committee, even though it's not, you know, that item right now, you know, it's helpful. I mean, it's kind of like policy, right? We trust the work that policy committee is doing and bringing to us, and also you all. So I appreciate your input on that and all the work that you've done as well. Thank you.
We always end up talking about the fund balance, and I know this, we got up to a high of almost nineteen percent. And you would call, I forget the exact phrase, you called it a controlled plummet? No. Controlled decrease. But I guess my question is, are we, in the long run, I'm not asking you to prognosticate out even a couple more years, but is the plan to kind of get back down to a, what would, what's a comfortable fund balance for? Okay, I suspect you've had this conversation. So I'm just, so I'd like to know, what do you feel comfortable? I know five percent is, is the warning bell start to go off.
Yeah, that's state treasury kind of gets involved kind of thing, so yes.
But are you, are we aiming to to manage it down or manage it in this like ten percent range?
Correct. The finance committee, as well as with Superintendent Lott, we've talked about at least trying to at least and kind of keep it on twelve to thirteen percent. We'd like to even see as as great as fifteen. You'll notice not on the agenda this evening is cash flow borrowing, where we borrow millions of dollars from the state pool. That's not on there because, and kind of a direct result of, I had to project out cash flow for fourteen months of what comes in and out on all those funds and just a cash basis, and we don't have the need to borrow, you know, and obviously, that can change. But that's kind of a direct result of holding our own larger fund balance to not do that. I can't say that we'll always be in that case, but because cash flow isn't always exactly the same as kind of like budget terms.
You're referring to that bridge that we usually do in June?
Yeah, it's a, it happened, we we put it on the agenda, it happens now, but then, because we have to do things with the through-in-law firm and to join into the pool with the Michigan Treasury. And so in general, that that hits in our August time that we get that, so that, because we don't get that payment in September. But there's also other cash flow things that affect us as well. We're a summer tax flow, so we get all our tax dollars there. And then obviously, the state has that, but there's, so there's lots of different things that play into that factor and how our payrolls hit and things like that. But that is one of the largest things is that that timing.
Well, just let me amplify the thanks from the other people that have echoed it at the front, and to the finance committee. We know you were a bit under the gun this last couple weeks, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of extra funding that doesn't normally there, as well as trying to really, the need for looking at that longer term, having those two extra years, even though you're not adopting anything on those tonight, I felt that they were very important to to kind of talk through because this, like I said, this is a very unique time in finance where, you know, we might be recognizing past expenditures in a current year, which usually does not ever happen. We are, you know, an audit sentence kind of comes in, those are only recognized in the year, so it's kind of a, as well as not only this takes a lot longer these couple of years, the same thing the audit is, we will see, we will have to do increased amount of checking and and we'll have additional single audits and things like that because of those funding, so.
Well, and I'll even back up on that and say that I appreciate the long-term forecasting as well because for me, that allows us to be stewards as we go, right? So then we can be talking about how do we main, you know, I always hear Dennis in the word structure in my, in my mind. And so like, how could we be continuously mindful of our structures to maintain that we don't have a 7% decrease between 23 and 24? We've already planned ahead for, for some of those things. And I could tell you we're on top of that. So that makes me, as the finance chair, I'm more even, less concerned. How about that?
Thanks, Brad. I just wanted to make a comment about the pie chart with school administration at 5%. And we had this conversation in finance and I think several of us have been asked about that expenditure. So I went back to 2016 through 17, I went back the last six years and averaged it. We're at 4.98 on overall general fund expenditures. So that is very constant. So you had made that remark in the finance team meeting and I just wanted to reinforce that. So starting with 4%, 4.7% back in 1617 up to just over, just under 5.1 this year. So very stable.
I guess I would echo that then. That showed up in general throughout, like these ideas of our percentages. So that also lets me know whether our organization is a $62 million or $68 million, as long as we keep those general percentages in the same places, then I think we're spending our money historically what we have. And then again, that's not a red flag then for me.
All right. Any other questions, comments? And you'll have another opportunity before the motion as well. Okay. Thank you, Miranda. We appreciate you. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the budget hearing of June 14th, 2022 at 6:37 PM. I'll make the motion. Miller? Thank you, Jenny.
Support, Jones.
Thank you, Candace. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. If we can pause for just a moment and invite all of our friends out in the waiting room in, we have plenty of seats.
I think it's still green light. Nobody hold anything. Okay, thank you. Maybe in conclusion, what I admired is the ecosystem insulin from the board and to the city. Everybody tried to work something new recovering from the losses. But there are some problem. As I said yesterday, we have come to the meeting, the two S. So, uh, okay. Sports and sex, but not salt. I'm introducing technology. I believe this is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Rayland Davis, parent. Whenever you're ready, Rayland.
Okay. I'm so glad to be here and I'm glad that I want to report about the sex education report that's going to be talked on today for your thing. First of all, I would like to quickly talk about the report that is in, and I have a copy of it. It talks first about how because of COVID, we only had 14% of students in the districts actually take this survey. And yet the SEAB has decided to make assumptions and make recommendations based on less than what they claim the 60% statistically numbers needed. So one of the things I would like, hopefully you guys can ask, is actually what the recommendations that come forth. Where is the scientific data to prove it? Because of the current numbers, I don't believe they're there. I assume they would have waited another year, wait for the data, come out again. So I don't, I don't believe the recommendations they have are statistically proven. Second of all, I would like to know why we are, 2019 was the last report and we are now three years instead of the state law required two years for this report. And again, just such, you know, I am watching. But again, that's another fraction. I still believe that both the CAB, the policy the board needs to make on Sex Education Advisory Board is, needs to be updated and it's not complete. There are issues being handled and decisions made by Dr. Latch that should be the board's decision to make. Specifically, again, why are the board members private? No other county in Washtenaw and about 90% of the schools in Michigan follow OMA with their CAB. The lines are Ann Arbor televises their meetings, publicizes their meetings, minutes are online, parents are invited to attend. Again, I'd like to formally complain that parents should be a part of this process and we should be allowed to watch the CAB meetings and be able to be part of that. Again, there are processes. I believe that there are, the CAB should regulate more than just the formal sex ed in our community, such as English languages and assignments and other things. It doesn't seem that Celine can't teach it, but I believe there is a process and a law in place. That's, that there are things that talk about sexuality and sex issues. And I know they're lab books, but there's, assignments are coming from the teachers. That we need to have a process involved to actually make a decision made and not just the whim of a teacher. And again, I'd just like to say that I think Celine has a lot of work to do in regard to the CAB. And I hope the board takes it seriously and, and writes finally some feedback to the public. We, this should be, parents should be involved and included in this process. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Rayland. Moving on to item number five, please. Revisions and approval of the agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll move to approve the agenda as printed.
Jenny, thank you.
Support, Gerbi.
Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Hearing non-motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our first scheduled report, which I think we have a lot of folks here for. Welcome. Honoring our district retirees, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources Kurt Ellis.
Thank you, President Stebbin and Board of Education. I would like to welcome a lot of longtime friends for Celine Area Schools back this evening for our annual retiree recognition. It's nice to be able to do this in person again and have folks back in the building and whatnot. We did put together a real short slideshow. It's about five and a half minutes long that has some pictures and some quotes from some of our retirees. We did have 32 retirees this year across all parts of the district and a number of them are here with us tonight. So we'll start with this real short little slideshow and then we'll get into the recognition of these plaques. Certainly many thanks to Anna Britnell and Ben Goodman for putting that together. It's really a bittersweet thing to watch that when you see 35, 36, 37 years of experience retiring. But it's also hard not to feel tremendous amount of joy for them when you see pictures of people with their grandkids or quotes about, you know, I've worked hard. So now it's my turn to play hard and live off the clock and whatnot. So really excited for these folks. One of the things that we've done for the last 10 years now, and we're going to do it again here tonight, is we give each of them a poem. And I'll read the poem real briefly if I could. The poem's called "The Builder." And it says, "I once saw a group of men tearing a building down, a group of men in my hometown. With a heave and a hoe and a mighty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, the kind you'd hired if you wanted to build?' He laughed and said, 'Why, no, indeed, for common labor is all I need. I can tear down in a day or two what it took the builder 10 years to do. And I asked myself as I walked away, which of these roles am I going to play? Am I the type that constantly tears down as I make my way foolishly around? Or am I the type that is trying to build with care with the hope that the people will be glad I was there?'" And I can tell these retirees, we are very, very glad you who are here, you've done great things for us. So what I would like to do, Kara and Anna will help us out here. We do have plaques for the folks that are here. So Rachel Ammon, I'm going to go back. I think what we've done in the past is if we could grab a picture out in the, I know nobody probably wants to stay for the rest of the board meeting. So if we could grab a picture. You're welcome to if you want to, though. I don't want to, I don't want to let anybody think they don't have to stay. Jolene Cruz. Yes. Would also like to thank SASSA. They've got some gifts for our retirees as well. So Jolene Cruz, Brian Cuff. Dave Fisk. Hemi. I would try to say your last name. I have, can you say it for me one more time? Yeah, there you go. Now you know why I did not even try. It is, and it's beautiful and I just can't, I know how to spell it now after all these years. I just cannot say it. Sherry Harsh is not here. Mike Hill. Kim Hune.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Sote. Jackie Sprunger. Deb Waterman. And last, I think, but not least here, Mary Williams. I was going to ask Mary to bake a cake. If you have never had a graduation cake, Mary did that for years, but I figured she could deserve a break. Linda's not retiring until the middle of the year. So she goes, just like Brian did last year. So she goes next year. So like I said, that is the group that's here now. There were 32 total. And we're, we're ready and working now to find capable replacements for these people. So please join me in again thanking this group for the wonderful things they've done.
They all left before we could say, say anything. So we're, we're mentally showering them with all of our gratitude. And I don't think Betsy Marl is here, but she would want me to say, please attend the Celine Alumni Banquet and picnic in the fall. She'll be in touch, I'm sure. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Kurt. And thank you to all of the 32 retirees, including the ones that couldn't be with us in person tonight. Moving on to our second scheduled report, Foundation for Celine Area Schools update. Anne Hurst, whenever you're ready.
Hello. All right, I'm here for my annual update from the foundation. So Ben's going to be my cue card guy or whatever, my Turner. All right, next one, here we go. We're going right in. Okay, maybe not. All right, so, and here we go. There we go. All right, all right, I know. And I'm going to have to keep looking over, sorry, because I, I'm going to read a little bit, of course, of this. So the mission for those of, those of you who don't know it, which I know you all do, is the Foundation for Celine Area Schools is a nonprofit organization that provides private funding to support academic projects, enrichment programs and other activities aimed at enhancing the quality of education in the Celine School District. We do this by raising money, receiving and distributing funds for projects that benefit students throughout our schools. Next slide. Our elevator speech, though, if we were to have one, would read something like this. Of course, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We've been around since 1987 and we provide funding to support creative and innovative initiatives that benefit our students. That's what we're, we're all about and contribute to the educational excellence of Celine Area Schools. We award teaching, building, district partnerships, student-led grants throughout the district. And we have almost awarded $1.6 million since 1987. So I'm very excited about that. So our history again started in 1987 as a full volunteer organization. Little bit of the history is that I came on in January of 2016 as a part-time executive director. Currently, so I'm covering this year, 2122. So our board consisted of President Amy Sancharan, Vice President Ben Lilly, Treasurer Tom Cost, again, our Secretary Sarah Kwanah, and then our President Emeritus Katie Murphy. We just turned over a few of those positions, added a few, few rotated off. But again, that was 21 and 22. So I want to give a shout out to our current board that just served, or our current officers that served this past year. So I'm digging right into the numbers because that's one thing that, of course, we do, we give. And I'm proud to say that this year, even still in a COVID year, we gave more in grant money than we ever had before. We gave $129,612 for 39 grants. Isn't that wonderful? And you can see the breakdown. Sean Skelly would be really proud of me. I did my first pie chart. And I was like, I don't know how to do this, took 10 minutes, but that's okay. So I got it. But obviously that's a breakout of the different schools and where we're putting our money. But a lot of DEI initiatives, many book requests this year, just amazing, which is wonderful. STEM-related subjects, of course, social, emotional, lifelong fitness, special education and much more. But an incredible breakdown, really proud of that 129,000. So these are just a couple, a couple of pictures. And you know I had to put that in there, Dr. Latch. So one of the teaching grants this year was Jesse Markey and Abby Severs in the Life Skills Program. They asked for the cardio drumming balls for our kids in life skills. And so Laura and Steve, a little reluctantly, but did it for me at the, at the Sail Into Spring event. Girls Who Code, we did a second year. I think we're giving, giving away books for the club over there at the middle school. Like I said, lots and lots of diversity, equity and inclusion materials and books, which is wonderful. Joe Weldon and Rocky and Nikki and all the, all the good folks over at the high school asked for a big grant for strength and wellness and training and all sorts of fun fitness stuff for the high school that really at some point every kid will have and will use because there's lifelong fitness, I believe is for every child in high school. So wonderful. Yes, it's true, I put a dead pig on the screen. So Sarah Stuckey, I know, you're okay with that, Brad. So Sarah Stuckey, is it Stuckey, Stucky? We love her. She's full of enthusiasm, you know, you know her. And she's like, we need to go back to good old dissection, right? And so there it is, the pig she sent me. So that was one of the teaching grants this year as well. Like I said, just a snippet. Building and district grants, we got quite a few this year. Top left-hand corner, that's Anna Britnell. She put together a whole grant for the district, really pulling in all sorts of historical information about Celine. In fact, it's going to be located right here outside of the lobby. So we're really excited about that. Couple cute pictures of books. It was a multilingual grant that I believe it was Katie O'Keefe that wrote. So that our students in, she's teaching, well, I gotta write this, I wrote this down. That she is teaching English as a second language too. She wanted still books in their primary language. So that was wonderful. She already told me, she's like, Anna, I'm going to ask for grant part two next year. She goes, this is wonderful and it's throughout the district. There's our own Kelly Widman, who actually wrote a grant to, for an alumni, a wonderful alumni, young man who graduated from here and then graduated, obviously, well, graduated from college, got a really good job. And then he wrote a book. And so Kelly wanted to put that book in every single library and media center in, in the district. And just celebrating the Celine success is what she called it. So that was wonderful. Something called, well, they called it collaborating, the little collaborators. But basically it was a Light Bright Board that is now throughout all of the media centers and the elementary schools. And kids can collaborate, communicate, if you, all of you remember good old Light Bright. So that was fun. An augmented reality globe that the elementary kids get to do and go on all sorts of adventures and do all sorts of research that way. Ken Yada Hughes put a social, emotional learning grant in at the very beginning of the year for all of Pleasant Ridge. And so that's a cute picture of the kids with that curriculum infused into their, their entire day. And then there's Deb Waterman and Lisa York, who came up with something wonderful called digital signage. And so it's in the middle school and I think eventually maybe the plan is to have one, some of these, these TV monitors throughout the entire district, right? And really access for all students, they wrote specifically by adding the visual modality of communication. And so how wonderful, so many things we hear and then we forget about it, but when you see it, it's different. So those, again, just a few of the mini building and district grants. One that'll always be close to my heart, and you know that, is the Connecting Club. So the first student-led grant that we ever did was for the Connecting Club. So Trish Farren, a bunch of her kids had a great idea. And I remember running into her at the parking lot one day and she said, and she was talking to me, I said, write a grant. And sure enough, that's how the Connecting Club came out of that. Then the next year, I think, they wrote the Kindness Rocks Project grant. Then the next year, they did outdoor seating. And then this year, they just did the Pathway to Inclusion, which I know many of you were at the ribbon cutting of that. But what an incredible space, if you haven't been there at the high school, right? And now accessible to all. And just always remember, this is one of those stories of grants that's just heartfelt. So always remember that when we're talking about the incredible kids that we have here. So our current financials right now, we are at $1,195,000 as our net asset. We were higher until, of course, everything hit and we all lost a little money in the stock market. So, but we are doing extremely well. So there's a breakdown of the net assets broken out by donor restricted funds, donor or board restricted and then unrestricted. And then our different sources of income, the fundraising, the individual donations and corporate sponsors. And again, given the situation, we have had really incredibly good years. Just want to share, since I jumped, I went, came into this role in 2016, these are just some of the numbers I'd like to share with you. We raised 1,500, or I'm sorry, 1,547,000 since 19, since 2016. We have awarded 677,000 for about 200 grants since then. And if you look at the fact that since 1987, we have awarded almost 1.6 million, almost over 40% of what we have awarded has been since 2016. And again, those are just a financial breakdown, even in the midst of COVID. People were giving, sponsors were incredible, donors just were phenomenal. And this year was the first year we ever hit that $300,000 mark. We're really excited about that. We had one really, really big gift that are going to some, some specific things, but still we, we went over 300,000. So we are only, we'll only continue to do well. So we got back to normal with some of our events, which was really exciting. So the Hall of Famers, God bless them all, the class of 2020 and 21, I mean, they waited a long time to get recognition. And so we had that wonderful event, typical patio event on the Friday night and then the induction ceremony the next night. The night fall raiser, we actually, fall fundraiser, we actually got back and did that, which was wonderful. A few of you are up there. We raised $45,000 at that. We, Nicole Phelps was one of our speakers, my wonderful student rep, Elise Narbit spoke as well. And we launched something called the Superintendent Circle that night. If you gave $1,000 or more, we had a nice little gathering in March. And so that really inspired a lot of people to give. And then at our Sail Into Spring event, we made a really wise decision not to do snowblass, given all that was going on. But April, it was so wonderful, or the end of, yeah, end of April was wonderful to come back together in, at Imagine. And we again, had a good amount of money raised and had a lot of fun. At the bottom right corner, I do want to point out, those are student reps that we have on our board. Elise is graduating. Andre is a junior, going to be now a senior. And then our newest rep is a, is a gal named Sarah Yusup. So we're excited to have her. Alumni, we acquired them a few years ago and just continued to do wonderful things, always have a presence at the fair. I have a presence at the Holiday Parade. We had a special event for Coach Sipple a while in the winter. And a banquet that they had, that they got to get to do again, the Alumni Banquet back in September. It will be back in June this year. And then my dear friend David Helmer and I was a highlight of my little world, was being the grand marshal at the Holiday Parade. You know, I had to throw that in there. And, and David, my dear friend and alumni, got to be the emcee. So what a, what a special time that was. And then our Goodwill Project. Two of my trustees came up with this idea last year and where we actually spent money and bought things from our sponsors and then just lavished our staff, letting them know how important they were. So popcorn from Imagine and scones from Kim at Brewed Awakening. Hello, Zach. And Bush's wonderful fruit tray. So hopefully they'll continue to do that. Our sponsors, I love this cute picture with Elise. They are incredible. They continue to give, they continue to support and they're all in, which is absolutely wonderful. Always have to shout out to my sponsors. So a couple of dates that you do need to remember, June 25th is the Alumni Banquet. They're back doing it in June, which is great. September 9th and 10th will be the Hall of Fame weekend. It's one week earlier than usual this year and there are our Hala, our 2022 inductees. And then October 13th, we've already set the date for the Fall Fundraiser, which is wonderful. I'm going to read something to you on a personal note as I am leaving this position. And then if you have any questions or anything at the end, I'll be happy to answer them. So it's me, as you've heard, most of you have heard, I submitted my resignation as the Executive Director of the Foundation about a month ago. I'll be staying on until mid-August as we hope to have a new person in place by then. I've had a 10-year run with the foundation, starting off in 2012 as a volunteer, being elected as a trustee in 2014 and becoming the first ever Executive Director in 2016. My first year was challenging, to say the least, but by January 2017, I gained my wings and began to soar. Strategic planning, a 30-year, a 30th year celebration, continual growth, an engaged board and many fabulous volunteers helped take this organization to the next level. Successful fundraising, a board endowment, a new website, many generous corporate sponsors, current donors and new donors, and a plethora of fresh ideas from a well-rounded and high-functioning board of trustees. We do all of this to raise funds, to award grants for our incredible Celine School District teachers and students, most importantly. For me, it's been an incredible joy. I do need to give out a few thank yous. Special thank you to Katie Murphy. joy. I do need to give out a few thank yous. Special thank you to Katie Murphy for being the yin to my yang for the last six and a half years. She and I came on the board together in 2014, and with much persuading on my part, she became the president in 2017. She was a huge support to me and continues to play a very important role in the foundation. Thanks to the current president, Amy Sancharan, and the entire board, past and present, for all the time, talent, and treasure that they give to the foundation. We have a truly dedicated group of wonderful people that care about our students, staff, and district. Special thanks to Scott Graydon for being a mentor and confidant through the first years, and always working closely and collaboratively with me and the foundation. Special friend, special thanks to my special friend, Steve Lottch, for also being a confidant, committed supporter of the foundation for many years, and all that you continue to do for the schools. You know I will always support you. Having served on the Michigan Education Foundation Board and being involved with other school foundations throughout the state for many years, I came to find out, and I've shared this before, that it's not necessarily common for a foundation and school district to work together so well like we do. That relationship had started in the past and only continues to grow. The entire administrative team, entire staff, has been more than supportive throughout the years, and we're always willing to help with anything that I asked for. I am so appreciative, and I'm serious about the entire staff of Celine School District, I am forever grateful to all of them. I've made great friends over the years, established many relationships that will continue to be strong and only grow in the future, and for that, I'm very grateful. On a very personal note, I'll always be a proud Celine alumni, and my husband and I have two sons who also graduated from Celine. I'm especially proud of our phenomenal special education program that my son Jonah is currently in, and will continue to be in for five years further. I, special thanks to Nicole Phelps, our angel, who had Jonah as a three-year-old in ECDD, and for now having Megan Coleman, who is our current teacher in the Young Adult Program. I cannot say enough about the love, the care, and the support that the special education program has given us through the last 17 years. Kudos to every pair educator, teacher, administrator, and every person that served on one of our teams over the years. All of them are exceptional at what they do. And now move on to new opportunities. Ecclesiastes 7:8 says that the end of a matter is better than the beginning. For me, that is very true. I leave the foundation having accomplished many personal and organizational goals over these last seven years. I'm hoping that the next executive director will be able to take this wonderful organization to the next level. I'll be around town, still very involved in the community, you can't get rid of me that easily, but I want you to know that it's truly been a great honor and privilege to lead this foundation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're trying to make us cry. We are so grateful for you. So the first thing I'm going to say is you're still here till August, because that's what you would tell me. But we're so grateful for you, and you are such a force for good and positivity. I've really enjoyed being with you for these, a little bit early morning meetings every month as the board liaison, together with Steve and with Kara each month, and we wanted to get you a little thank you present for always being collaborative, positive, and a wonderful ambassador for our school district.
Thank you, Jen. Aw, that's wonderful. Thank you, that's beautiful. Oh my gosh. Tran, are you getting the pictures?
Tag lilies. No, I'm just kidding. I'm teasing. But I'm sure everyone else would like to say a few words.
You guys are sweet. Thank you so much.
You can set that down.
Beautiful.
Would anyone, yeah, Jenny, go ahead.
Well, as someone who first met Anne Hurst, many moons ago, when my babies were little, 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 and you poured into me, and I will always remember that. So thank you for that. I also just thank you for the 10 years that you dedicated to this particular position, but even before then, your presence in our community has just been positive. As someone who has been a recipient of many of your grants, of many of the grants, when I was working in the district, your encouragement, and just, you know, every time I saw you, you'd say, write a grant, what are you going to write a grant about, what are you going to write a grant about? So you're just constant, your creativity and your constant encouragement and your positivity has just been something that I know the entire staff has appreciated during your tenure. And I think, just as you said, you hope that the next person can take the, take this position to the next level, take the foundation to the next level. You have exceeded that. You have gone above and beyond, and the work that the foundation is doing now just blows my mind, even just in the last five years. So congratulations, I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Force of nature. Indeed. I ran into you soon after we met, and the first things I saw you at CBS, and it was like, oh my gosh, we're old best buddies and pals. And it could be because your husband and I have the same barber. But I went to my first snow blast, and said, what is this all about? And was blown away, and I continue to be so. And especially looking at the grants that have come out of the FSAS, they've been amazing, including, you know, literacy, computer coding, and now with Anna Britnell and Company's, the historical grant too, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that later too. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, and we're looking forward to helping, helping whoever follows you to fit into your shoes.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, so we haven't known each other long, but I had the opportunity to attend the fall fundraiser, and just was blown away. I didn't even realize how much the foundation was doing until, you know, coming into this role, and I was just like, wow, sitting next to teachers that were so excited to have their creativity encouraged, and, you know, being allowed to, or being able to build on their ideas in so many creative ways. So I'm just impressed by the work that's been done, and really inspired, and look forward to seeing what continues to come out of that, and just grateful for the support for a more inclusive district as a whole. So that's powerful. I love seeing the books and the diverse reading that students are able to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Candace.
I'll never forget the day I met you.
I remember.
On the campaign trail, your energy is infectious, and it is something that inspires people around you, whether it is to donate to the foundation, or whether it, you impact classrooms. And so from an educator, like, that is just, we are able to do, I kept seeing the word, and kept creativity, and things that go above and beyond the call. And so you enhance outcomes for our students. And so for me, but I tell you, that day that I met you, I knew, I was like, you have so much passion and energy and enthusiasm, and it's, we are losing a good one in you, but you have left this foundation an incredible place. And thank you very much. For me as an educator, on behalf of all educators, on behalf of students, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, Steve?
I will be brief. Anne Hurst, thank you very much for teaching me a lot about love, care, and leadership, but also friendship. I'm really going to miss that, and I appreciate all of it you've done to support me and the district.
I always will. Thank you. Thanks again so much. Beautiful.
Thank you very much. They kind of match your shoes a little bit. Very nice. Okay, with a big smile on my face, going from one very pleasant, well, retirees to another pleasant thing. Next up, we have our District Parent Council. I believe we have representative from all. Is Sarah here?
Darcy.
Darcy speaking, okay, wonderful. So for those who don't know, our District Parents Council is made up of our PTA and our PTO presidents or their designees, and this is an invaluable team of partners for our school district. So we're very pleased, and I hope this won't be the last time our PTAs and PTOs are in this boardroom. We are very pleased to welcome all of our buildings. So we have a presentation. If you guys could do me a favor and introduce yourselves in your building when you're speaking, so everyone can hear that, that would be awesome. So we have Nicole, Jackie, Kathy, Michelle, Amy, and Darcy.
Darcy Burwick, SHSPTO.
Oh, are you going to present?
It is on.
Amy Good, Middle School, President, PTO.
Jackie Sweet, Heritage.
Kathy Giles, Harvest.
Nicole Rocky, Pleasant Ridge.
And I'm Michelle Chekowitz, the Principal of Woodland Meadows, representing our amazing
Girl, I was waiting for my slide.
Do we have a high school slide? The PTO at the high school was pretty involved this year. It was, it was nice to sort of get back into the flow of things and hoping to do so more next year. We provide a lot of volunteers for different events. We did schedule pickup and school pictures. The biggest thing that we do, and most of our grant money, goes to teachers in their classrooms, and they have $100 per classroom. The other fun thing we've done for the past couple of years is giving snacks to students during school by testing, SAT, PAT, PSAT, ACT. Our most popular event is when we bring in someone to talk about colleges and careers. And we've also partnered with the foundation to bring in, to send teachers to some training for Link Crew. Link Crew is a sort of a national organization, and it's a great benefit for the kids. This year, we did send some money to Oxford to support their kids and their school. And the middle school was very gracious and organized celebration for Transportation Department, so we partnered with them in that. And of course, staff appreciation. And like I said, next year, we're really hoping to sort of get back to a little bit more normal, getting some more volunteers in the schools. And the exciting thing we're trying to do, and working with Teresa's, to get some student reps for the PTO. And I think that's probably pretty much it for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere too far.
I forgot to tell her she was going first. Sorry. So I represent the middle school PTO, and our stuff is pretty similar to the high school. We do a hassle-free fundraiser at the middle school, which is a breath of fresh air, I think, for middle school parents when they get to that stage. We had a really successful book fair this year, which was kind of interesting. Usually as they go up in grades, I think usually it falls back, but we had, kids went crazy and bought all the books. So we made like over $6,000 in scholastic bucks that we gave back to the teachers, which was nice. That's free money. So whenever teachers turn in grants for books of any kind of reading material, we went to our scholastic bucks first and tried to spend those. And so now we have more for new teachers and things for next year. As Darcy mentioned, we did a super special breakfast for Transportation and Grounds, which I really liked, and I would love to bring that back each year. They were so appreciative, and it was really nice to get to know them. We do conference dinners, holiday, you know, celebrations. Staff Appreciation Week is a big deal, because it's full, full-time, all day, the whole week, and we did a lot of fun things, and the middle school staff is so, so appreciative. Next year, so this is my first year at the middle school, next year we have some big ideas, and I'm really excited. This year, we worked a lot on forming relationships with our staff. We had a really fresh new board this year, so a lot of the staff didn't know us, so I'm really excited to further that relationship with the staff, but also to partner with the children, with the kids, because we did a lot of stuff, but we didn't get to be with them as much. So I'm really excited for that next year. One thing we, I've already talked to some of our clubs and organizations, and Lori Dawson, about having a partnership with our clubs and organizations and student groups, inviting them to our meetings, and also bringing in student-led grants. So we're looking at bringing that onboard next year as a brand new thing. And also doing some fun events outside of school as well. So some people have mentioned things like tailgates. I know that the porch is booked, whoever's in charge of that, I already know. I didn't book it in time, but doing fun, different things after school. So that's what's, yeah, well, no, we'll do the hill or something. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
All right. At Heritage this year, we had a really busy year, which was really awesome because this year the students were able to enjoy their first full, full school assembly with the Spirit of Harriet Tubman presentation. We had a return of Field Day at Crabtree, and 5th grade celebration was also at Crabtree, and that was enjoyed by all of those students. And we also had Popcorn Fridays, which had a great benefit in the end, which I'll cover later. Families were able to connect at the Fall Family Fest at Coleman's Farm through the enrichment nights, which were literacy night and science, and through the end-of-the-year activities that parents were able to come and be involved in. The staff felt the love from the community for Staff Appreciation Week during the SAS staff shout-outs and through conference dinners. And then this year, we made a difference by providing roughly $18,000, which included the assemblies, field trips, transportation, classroom funds, curriculum enhancements, Marches, Reading Month, and the band experts to make up for last year's COVID gap, where we didn't have band. So every year, they bring in experts, and so this year they had to have double, so we covered that cost. The year-end fun, which was a lot of fun, we had, we covered all, we covered Field Day, 5th grade celebration, the ice cream truck, all of that, all of that fun stuff. And then we had, from the Popcorn Fridays, we were able to make a $2,200 donation to Chad Tough, because Chad will always be part of the class of 2029.
So at Harvest this year, we were really excited to bring people back into the building, whether that was parents coming in for back-to-school night, different things like Fun Run, book fair, but also we brought the Hands-on Museum into the school for some enrichment opportunities, which was really nice. The teachers really enjoyed that. We had some mini grants for some new PE equipment, which was much needed. We were able to do some outside field trips, so bringing back, paying for the transportation for that, which was nice. We still stuck with some of our Harvest Helping Hands charities, reached out to some new organizations. We started something new called the Kindness Olympics to go along with what was happening in the world, and getting the students interested and engaged in that, but also bringing up the idea of being kind to themselves, to their families, the community, and the world. We also did a big staff appreciation event, and brought back Field Day, which is a big deal at Harvest. We like to do it big there. Next year, we plan to bring back some of the seasonal after, in the evening events. We did not do that this year, we just weren't comfortable doing those, so we're happy to bring those back hopefully next year. I was also informed yesterday that it's the 20th anniversary of the Harvest Building this upcoming school year, so we are also going to look to do something fun for that.
All right. So I'm representing Pleasant Ridge tonight. We had a really busy year, and we started off our fall welcoming both students and families back into the school at back-to-school night. We hosted PR on the hill to try to get families together in the fall. We had pizza and snacks for the kids, and then families could walk over to the football game after that. Our big fall fundraiser was the Color Me Silly Fun Run. This was a huge success this year. We had a big push to raise money for all of the student enrichment activities that we help fund throughout the year, as well as classroom parties and field trips and teacher grants and all sorts of stuff. But in addition to that, we were really trying to raise some money to help make our playground more inclusive, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. And then in the winter, we were bummed not to be able to have art shows, so we worked with Mrs. Marsh, our art teacher, and had a new event, the Outdoor Winter Luminary Walk, which was a huge success, very well-attended. All of our students, young fives through 3rd grade, made luminaries that were on display. We had hot chocolate and popcorn and ice sculptures. We had a campfire, and Mrs. Hughes read stories to the kids by the campfire. It was a great event. This spring, we had a sensational dance. We had a dance for the students, and we kind of paired that with a silent auction, which was a new event for us, and was also very successful. We raised over $7,000. And this, again, was to help fund our playground donation. So- So the playground donation is kind of a big combination of support from the foundation. Nicole Phelps got a grant from the foundation. The district is putting in a lot of money towards this, and we were able to donate $20,000 towards this project. So we were really excited to be able to give that and help make our playground more accessible for all of our students. This spring, we did family playdates at Milpon Park. And again, these were a huge success, really well-attended, with very minimal effort on our part. We just said this date, this time at Milpon Park. We had a kindergarten night, a 1st-grade night, 2nd grade. And we really felt this huge desire for families to meet other families and to get to see their kids playing with friends and meet those friends. So I think that's what made some of those playdates such a big success. Also, this spring, we had, we supported Staff Appreciation Week, lots of fun events that week, helped support Field Day and as well as class picnics. Next year, we hope to do a lot of these events again. And really, I think one of the things that we learned this year is that our families were really desiring that connection and meeting each other. And so we hope to do some of those playdates and some of those interactive events earlier in the year.
Well, I am really honored here to represent our PTA from Woodland Meadows. They have done an amazing job, along with the other PTAs and PTAs that are here tonight. Highlights for Woodland Meadows include our Fall Fun Run, which is our main fundraiser of the year. Students were able to go outside, get some exercise. We even brought in bouncers this year, so they had a lot of fun with the Fun Run and some additional exercise and activities. Additionally, we did our Fall Festival around October, where we were able to bring families in and participate in bingo and other fun fall events. And then our PTA was incredibly responsive to what was happening with our community and our school COVID numbers, and we saw a slight spike. So in the winter, when those gingerbread, when our traditional gingerbread night came about, they were able to pivot, and they pivoted to this amazing plan to continue to sell our gingerbread house kits. And they did a grab-and-go kit night, so they, you could go home, pick up your kit, and make your gingerbread house at home. We continued with our amazing birthday book initiative, where every student at Woodland Meadows gets a book for their birthday and the month of their birthday, and they get to celebrate that. We funded field trips, as we brought those back this year. We funded our Leader in Me program. Woodland Meadows is incredibly proud to be a Leader in Me school, where we help to build leadership habits and traits amongst our students. Additionally, we funded more library books for our media center, classroom materials in classrooms, Staff Appreciation Week, where our staff is showered with appreciation and special treats for the week, conference dinners, where we know those are long nights for our teachers and our staff, and for the principal. And our PTA was so generous. It's really nice to know, as you're sitting through those long nights, that there's a yummy meal waiting ahead for you, and they were just amazingly generous with that. Additionally, we had a Mud Hens game, where we all were able to go to a special night at a Mud Hens game. And we brought back Field Day, which was a huge success. I know you heard that from the other schools as well. It's a really big deal for our elementary students. So to have that opportunity to celebrate and to participate in those community partnerships that are so important for Field Day, it was really a huge success. We had a spring auction, where students were able, and families were able to bid on events. A very special group of students were able to have ice cream sundaes with me. Just a really fun event, and all of our staff participated in that, and our PTA was so generous with that. And then, as always, anyone who's been through Woodland Meadows knows, our 3rd grade handprints is our tradition, where every student that leaves makes a mark on our heart, but also makes a mark on our wall with their handprint and their name. And we were able to do that again this year. So I want to thank publicly our wonderful PTA for helping to make that all happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's clap. Oh, stay up here for just a second. You're not getting off that easy. Amy knows that. I am smiling so huge during all of these slides. I'm a recovering PTA president. That's what I tell everybody at Pleasant Ridge. Proud PTA president of Pleasant Ridge. This is so important. So when I think about next year, and Steve knows I'm thinking about next year, and I'm like, let's set the table this summer. We set the table for next year. You guys are such a huge, important piece of that. The smiles, the promoting confidence in the kids, the getting them outside, the exercise. This is not just about fundraising. And sometimes I think when people hear PTO and PTO, they like, they run their other way, and they're like, oh, God, they're going to ask me for money. Okay, well, yeah, but, but this is very, very hard work. And it's hard work because you love children, and that's really important. The other important piece of this is parental engagement and opportunity to partner with staff. Because it's board policy. Parental engagement is actually board policy. And data firmly states that the more parental engagement that occurs, especially on the front end, the better those students are going to do in schoolwork, with mental health, with grades, with everything. So I'm going to keep it real, and I'm going to ask you what you all want, because I want to help you. I'm going to help the middle school, because I'm a PTO member at the middle school. I'm going to help Pleasant Ridge, because I'm still a member of the PTA at Pleasant Ridge, because they let me. But I want to know, how can we help? How can this board help you? And so I guess my first question is for the elementary side of the house, and then my second question is for the secondary education side of the house. It's not lost on me that you all had feedback around the standardization of field trips, assemblies, holidays, looking at kind of room parents and looking at things like that. I think having guidelines, I guess that's the word that I heard used from you all. Having guidelines is a good idea. It doesn't mean it needs to be board policy, but having guidelines and suggestions for operations, I think, is a very good idea. I don't want to take away, I want to support the individual passion in each building. I think each building's different, and that's great. But, you know, when we have, you know, one building, so, I'm just going to pick on Halloween for a second. I love Halloween. But when you have one, one classroom or one building doing one thing in another one, it's hard to explain to the children, right? That's what I'm hearing from you all. So I guess my first question, and any or all of the elementary buildings can take this, how can we support, or what can you do to kind of be inclusive of all and kind of help boost parental engagement? And I hate to use the word standardization, but, but some, some support, right? And some guidelines. So I guess this goes back, I guess, I guess this goes back to like the original request that I heard.
Thank you for asking the question, and thank you for all of your support throughout everything, especially in this difficult year. But I, everything you just said, I think, is things that we're asking for. We're asking for consistency and, and not, I agree, every building is different. And teachers want to run their classrooms differently, and they should be able to do that. But, but I think that some standardization or guidance in terms of, you know, holiday celebrations and volunteers and, like I mentioned, that I think we're feeling like parents really are striving for that connection, to connect with other families, especially at the younger ages, when maybe they were virtual for a year, and now they're in 1st or 2nd grade, and they don't know other parents. And so they're looking to make those connections. And so I think, hopefully, next year, our COVID numbers are better, and we can have more, more consistency and more guidance in terms of what's allowed and what isn't, so that we can support those connections and healthy relationships among students.
Thank you. Anybody else from elementaries want to say anything? Jackie? Kathy? Michelle?
Nicole covered a whole bunch, but another thing that, what, that we've been discussing is each classroom is different. So we have classrooms that are, have parents fully engaged, coming in, supporting everything that's going on in there. Then there's other classrooms that are, have the parents that are questioning, like, why weren't we invited to go and do like a class party and stuff? So that always comes back to us, because they think that we have some sort of authority, but we just do the best that we can. And so that was just another thing that was brought up as a concern.
Thank you, Jackie. Do you want to add, Kathy or Michelle?
Well, I could just speak briefly. I think each of the buildings has wonderful opportunities there. And I would just caution that it's not about having a competition. And I think it's really important that we support each other's events. And I loved hearing about the Luminary Walk. We don't have that, but rather than try to recreate that, I would love to go and support your Luminary Walk. So it's not about, well, you have this, so now I have to have it as well. But instead, you have this, and I have this. Let's support one another. And I think the more we can communicate all of the offerings to the entire district, the more opportunities we have to support all of our schools.
Thanks, Michelle. I love it. I guess now my question for Darcy and for Amy for secondary education. We hear a lot about mental health in all grades, but I'd like to specifically talk about the middle school and the high school and know what we can do to support our friends there from a PTO perspective. I have a lot of thoughts about inclusion here. I'll just say a short story that was shared with me. When we have things like class trips or class activities, all are welcome. And not every student has a bank of a lot of people that they can invite to a party and that will show up. And when we have opportunities to do things as a community within the buildings and within the classes, all means all, and I really like that. So I'd like to talk about inclusive activities that you all are thinking about. And also, I'd like to ask about anything that the board can do, or PTOs, you guys are both PTOs, PTOs can do at the high school and at the middle school to support these kids that are honestly struggling with the last few years. And where do they fit in in the social structure? They're developing like crazy at the middle school. You both know all of this. So any, any thoughts that you have on what you can do to support and what we can do to support, I would appreciate.
I was just going to mention that this actually came up at DPC. Anne Cummings presented at our DPC meeting and was talking about ways that we can partner with, with her and kind of our teams. And the mental health issue did come up, and she said they're doing a lot of support for things at the high school. And I'm like, hi, middle school. Like, I mean, I know, you know, that we could also use resources. So I did kind of offer up to help be a bridge a little bit between them and the middle school. I know the social worker, psychologist, everyone is so, so busy, and they're, you know, they, their heads are spinning and their, their workloads are crazy. So just in ways that we can support them, we're happy to do that. I know at the middle school, it's a little different with family and community events. They don't necessarily want their parents there. I get quite a lot of looks when I'm in the building for my daughter. But I'm open to, you know, next year, we're, we're looking at working with the kids. So one thing we're looking at is what do they want to do? What kind of events do they want to do? I want them to be in charge of some stuff, and how can we support them as a PTO? One more thing on inclusivity, we have a wonderful leader, who, she was in the back, Laura. And she is, every time we think of an event or something going on, she has a most organized, structured list of all the things that we do when we're planning and carrying out events in the school that involve everyone and make sure everyone's included. So I'm happy and thankful for that.
Thanks, Amy. I really like the idea of asking the students what they want. That's the trick to middle school or something. Don't tell them, just ask them what they want. I agree. Darcy?
Yeah, my, my heart goes out to the, the lower elementaries, because that is really where the ground level, the parents come in and are involved in the activities and watch their children grow. And so I understand that devastating impact of COVID on that relationship for both parents and students and making family connections. Because as you will find out, if you don't already have older kids, that parental participation sort of fades off. They want nothing to do with you in high school.
Or middle.
Get away with a little bit of middle, but yeah, they would rather never see you in the high school. And as you saw from the list of activities, there's not a lot of student-parent interaction. We strive to support our teachers, who are with our children all day, every day, and support them in other ways that they need, like through Link Crew, who will help them over the summer. And in the past, we have supported what was termed at that time, the Hornet Hatch, which is clothing and food for students who would need it. And there was a partnership with SASS there. So I think that my ask with the board supporting us is just to remember that, you know, we're looking at the whole child. And truly, teenagers struggle normally, and particular populations within the teenagers also suffer. COVID has had a heavy impact on them. And so looking at more ways to fund or find mental health, wellness, social, emotional resources for them. We do have Finn the Dog, but we've only got one dog, and there's like 1,700 kids in the high school. So I, you know, as you're talking budget and, and setting the vision for the district in order to be academic learners, they need to come healthy and safe and ready to learn. So I think looking at that would be lovely. That's, so that's my ask. And money.
Of course. It goes without saying, all of you want money. I already know. Thank you for indulging me. This is incredibly important. And as we move through the summer, it's important that we listen to you and to the other parents and to our administration and our teachers and all of our staff to prepare for next year and just really knock it out of the park. So I appreciate it, and I apologize to my trustees, because I could talk PTA and PTO stuff all day. So I'm going to give them the opportunity to chime in. Yes, Susan, then Jenny?
Real quick, oh, hello? Real quick, well, first of all, you all are doing amazing things. And I was excited personally, as a parent, to be able to get back and field day and volunteer, and then also, you know, seeing the other parents as well. I think that was super important and having those interactions. So I like that there was more in creative ways, you know, the gingerbread house and being able to, you know, the outdoor events, that kind of thing, to bring, you know, even though conditions were, you know, not, not good with COVID and everything, you all made it available to all parents and teachers and families. So my, my big question is, so you are the District Parent Council? And so I assume you all meet together and talk? And so if you could tell me a little more about that, how you all are partnering?
Who's been out the longest? Darcy, you want to?
Are you trying to say I'm the oldest? Youngest heart. Yeah, we've been doing it for years. I think it's six to eight weeks, meeting up, sort of agenda items. I remember back in 2014, 2015, you know, here, the bond is coming up. This is what we're looking at doing. And it's, it's building community support. And I do think that, you know, especially at the elementary levels, for them to be able to coordinate activities is lovely. Many years ago, when we were all doing Kalahari Resorts, that sort of gelled in the DPC meetings to do, instead of individual fundraisers, we did it as a district. So I think meeting together every, so often and sharing our information does sort of connect us all in fabulous community ways. Thank you.
All right. Well, I was just listening and also reminiscing about when I was a teacher in many of your buildings and, and also when my kids were in many of your buildings and still are. So first, I'll say thank you to Darcy and to this, to the high school PTO, PTA. I never can remember which is, okay. So PTO, I can never remember which building is which. But thank you for providing ways for parents to still be involved, but not like, you know, in our kids' faces all the time. So when I can drop off a box of Goldfish crackers at the front desk or something like that, or send money in a Venmo, or, not Venmo, in, no, well, in the, the RevTrak, yeah, RevTrak, yeah, yeah. So those are, those are ways that I appreciate still being a little bit involved, but also my kids appreciate that I'm not in their faces all day. But just a few things that I'm really impressed. I am, I'm really excited about the partnership and collaboration that many of you mentioned by having some student reps. And I think that, that really highlights our student-centered approach and, and really fosters and facilitates the growth and leadership in, in our students. So I, I heard SHS and SMS talking. So I heard SHS and SMS talking about that. But I think even at our elementary level, just having kids who have that, you know, those ideas and that desire to be in those leadership positions, those third graders, because they're the king of the hill, they, you know, they take that and run with that. I know at one point at Woodland Meadows, a young man wrote an essay and created a whole playground in our community. So those young kids can do a lot, too. So I thought that that was really exciting to see. I want to thank you for honoring our transportation and buildings and grounds people with that breakfast. They keep us going. And I know I, as a trustee, am extremely proud that we have have a school-based Buildings and Grounds Department that is not privatized and that we can honor and support those people and recognize and appreciate them means a lot. I cannot tell you how much the staff appreciation week means to the teachers. I know that it does create a little bit of a burden on parents who are gathering a food item or a flower and bringing it on a special day, but you have no idea how much that means. And I don't think I knew exactly how much it meant until it wasn't there for me anymore. And so I just have to say, like, the feeling of just knowing on those conference nights that it is going to be a long night and I'm going to leave with a sore face from smiling and sore feet, but I know that I'm not going to be starving when I get home and that I'm going to have a good meal is just incredible. So thank you for the work that you're doing to support our teachers. Thank you for continuing to honor Chad and keep him in, you know, in the class. So that, I saw that and thought that that was really important. The last thing that I'll say is just that throughout each of your presentations, I really saw the compass reflected. I really saw the district initiatives. I saw creativity and communication and collaboration. I saw student-centeredness and families. And I saw just the ability for our students to grow and to thrive because that relationship between school and family is so important. Yeah, so those are the things that I was saying. There was one more thing I was going to say, but I just can't think of it off the top of my head right now. But thank you for the work that you do. I know that it is tireless and often thankless. So I hope that you're hearing from us tonight, that we appreciate you and all that you do for our students.
Well, Jenny, you rocked it. So I just want you to hear from me, thank you for having fun with our kids, right? They love the things you do and the opportunities you provide. And just thanks for doing everything. I know it doesn't just happen, so appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions for our PTA and PTO leaders? PTAs are K-3. They have bylaws and dues. And then all the others. I think you all were a hit. Which building is which? I think you all were a hit, and I think you have valuable contributions, both in this room and in every single unique building. So maybe we'll make this a regular occurrence. So thank you very, very much for coming. And we'll leave you alone because we also know how busy you'll be going into fall, so concentrate there. Thank you very much. Okay, moving, oh, Michelle's coming back. Moving on to Item D, Sex Education Advisory Board Update. Michelle Checkowitz and Kristin Hoffman-Piefler co-chairs.
It's the sex ed shimmy.
I just had to get a drink of water.
You know, things grow and change, Brad.
So once again, I'm Michelle Checkowitz. I'm the principal of Woodland Meadows, but I'm also a co-chair of a sex ed advisory board. And I'm here with my co-chair, my parent co-chair, Kristin Hoffman-Piefler. And we are very excited to provide a brief update of what we were able to accomplish this year and what we are currently working on as we move forward. So in this short presentation, if you want to switch to the next slide, we're going to do a quick SEAB or SEAB at a glance. We're going to review what our current goals are, what we've accomplished this year, and what's next. Can switch to the next slide?
So while they're figuring that out, there is some serious controversy within the SEAB world. Do we call it the SEAB or the SEAB? And it depends on who you are and where you are in the state. So I happen to be a SEAB person. Michelle's a SEAB person. Yeah, but we get along, so it works out. So who are we? The SEAB demographic is designed by the state of Michigan. We are Celine area schools admin and teachers. We have student representatives. And the bulk of our people are Celine area schools' parents. This current committee has parents with kids who are pre-school, very little, and parents who have kids that have graduated already. We also have health professionals and a clergy member. And again, that is set forth by the state of Michigan, that we have a well-rounded collection of people on the board. What do we do in the SEAB? We establish student-centered educational program goals for sexual health and wellness. We research, we review, and we recommend materials and methods of best practice to our school board, you, that are likely reduce rates of sex, pregnancy, and STIs in our student population. It's important to note that the SEAB is not a decision-making body. We basically take something off of your plates and do the research and review and then bring that back to you and say, this is what we've learned, this is what we know. And you are the decision-making body for any curricular changes that might happen. When does our term end? This term has one more school year in it. The next appointments will be in, I think the applications will be April of 2023, with the new board starting in June of 2023. So that's who we are. Next slide, please. Oh, perfect, great. So our goals. Part of our process is creating goals that help us sort of establish our plan for the years. Our goals are that we will establish or equip students with the knowledge and skills to develop healthy relationships and to avoid sexual behaviors that put them at risk for HIV, STIs, and unintended pregnancy. In the next slide, we'll look more specifically at what that means. We will make sure that our curricula aligns with state law, district mission, the school board of ed policies and initiatives, and also be congruent with the strategic framework of our district as well as the compass. We want to make sure that what we are providing our students not only fits Michigan law, but fits the culture and the mission of Celine schools. Our goal is also to engage our community and all of our stakeholders by soliciting feedback and data from all district resources, as well as students, guardians, teachers, and administrators. We can do this through a variety of methods. We can do it through surveys, like the K-12 Insight surveys. We can look at MiFi data. We can look at and listen to BOE public comment. We can, we hear, I hear from people in our community asking me, what's going on with the sex ed curriculum? What's happening with all of this? All of those pieces of feedback are really important in the process of our research and review. So if you look at the next slide, these are the specific objections, objectives. Basically, the goal is to keep kids healthy, happy, and safe. And we do that through helping kids learn healthy and unhealthy relationships, helping them take care of their bodies, helping them to be able to communicate and work with their peers and their loved ones in a way that is healthy and safe for them. There, I'm not going to read to you, y'all can read, but the objections or objectives are right there. I object to my, I object to my inability to say the word objectives. Yeah, that's about it, healthy, happy, and safe.
All right, so what has the SEAB established so far this year? Well, one of the things that was really important to us is that we establish good working relationships with our board members. You know, the topics that we talk about and the topics that we cover have strong emotions tied to them. And so being able to respect one another, to hear one another, to listen to one another, and to find commonality was extremely important to us. So as we plan each meeting, we do it with intentionality. Every meeting starts with our adoption of the Celine Bridge to Civility norms, making sure that we all commit to those. Our meetings continue with a finding common ground activity, whether we're playing commonality bingo among us, trying to make those connections, or if we are building sculptures of our hopes and dreams for the season, or sharing about our families. It's really important that we find commonality among us and that we don't let differences of opinion stop our ability to connect with one another. So that was really important, that we did that at every meeting. We've also gone through, when we presented research, we reviewed information, we made a recommendation to this board of ed, we had two public hearings, and the board of ed adopted the three P curriculum for our special education and young adult programs. And finally, at the end of our calendar year, we completed the 2021 program evaluation. During that process, we were able to evaluate what our new goals would be and what our next steps would be. On the next slide, the 2021 program evaluation is linked there in your packet, but it is also available on the district website underneath the academics link. In our curriculum, there's a sex ed advisory board area, and you can link right to that program evaluation to see it. The main points of our program evaluation is that we continue our commitment. We want to ensure that students receive a robust and relevant sex ed curriculum during their tenure throughout Celine area schools. We've identified some action items that we can act upon. We want to evaluate and investigate our current and our new sex ed curricula to see that we can increase support and engagement of Celine area school students and address the needs of our student body that is increasingly diverse and constantly connected through technology. Another action item is to evaluate the equity and inclusivity of our current sex ed curriculum as it relates to our LGBTQ students in our district. And a final goal is to, our final action item is to create and send new surveys to our stakeholder groups, our teachers, our students, our families, and to go through with our partnership with our Insight K-12 on being part of that, part of the cadence of surveying that we do as a district. And so now we're going to talk about where we are with the surveying.
So what's next? The next thing we need to do is we need to hear from the community. We need to hear from our students, our parents, our teachers. We're going to put out a new survey in the fall, in October, after everyone has settled in, and get that data. The most recent data that we have is very old, and we need to hear from our community again. So we will send that out in October 2022. We will review all of that. And then based on those findings, we will be able to move forward into next steps for looking at our current curriculum and looking at what we need, if anything, to make sure that our curriculum is relevant for students today. Our students live a very different life than we did growing up. We were not connected 24/7. We did not have technology at our disposal all the time. So we need to make sure that our curriculum helps kids navigate this new technological world as it relates to relationships and to each other.
Finally, we would like to thank you for all of your support with our Board of Education, to thank Dr. Lodge for his guidance, to thank Danielle Dross, who is our new regional director, and to thank Lori Beckover at our state level for guiding us and helping us whenever things come up and we have questions. And I also want to thank the rest, the other members of the SEAB who are not here today, who do an amazing job with this commitment, volunteering their time because we all share in our desire to help our students throughout this community. So thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Or seat? Yeah, Candace?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for all of your hard work on this. I know it's not easy, you know, not an easy topic, but love the idea about finding common ground because that's so important in this work. So just wanted to note that specifically. And then also say that I'm looking forward to working with you all as a board liaison to this committee. So, thank you.
It has been a joy to work with both of you. I like how you mentioned about the finding common ground. I personally, you know, we talk about bridge building, but don't actually ask each other what that means. And I think that's something that you all have demonstrated, at least what I've witnessed very well. Also, you know, people who completely disagree with me, like I, you know, have talked to, I've cried to one of them about connecting with family. And so, you know, I really appreciate those open and honest conversations, even though, you know, there's disagreements. So you all are a great team. So I guess moving forward, so I want to talk about research and data, which was mentioned earlier. I know recently, I don't know if you all are aware, the MiFi, I call it MiFi. Some people call it MiSai or something. Mefi. Yeah.
SEAB.
Yes. Oh, yeah. SEAB. I'm a SEAB, sorry. So that survey was removed for seventh graders. I know a lot of, I mean, I personally, before even getting on the board, have looked at that data, you know, when there's been meetings and forums at the schools. And so I know you mentioned the K through 12 Insight. I don't know if that's going to capture our younger students. I don't know if, I'm just thinking, what's the MiFi? That we will possibly lose extremely valuable data for those younger folks, even though we start at fourth grade with the sex education, reproductive health. So I just wanted to see how that will impact you and how you will adjust. I have some more questions after that.
Yeah, you know, the MiFi data is one very small piece of the data that we use to make decisions. The thing that's really nice about the MiFi data is that it is hyper-local to our county. But there is a plethora of data and studies out there on sex ed curricula and the way that it functions within young people's lives. It's nice to be able to look at our little pocket of the world, but we also have US data that we can pull from, state of Michigan data is all in there. So while it is always nice to have hyper-local data, we can absolutely continue to do our work without that piece.
Can I add?
Yeah, absolutely.
I recognize what you're saying, and I think you're right. I think we will lose that localized data. However, we can look for county-wide data and also the importance of the surveying that we're going to do. We will be reaching out to our students, and for the youngest students, we'll be reaching out to parents. We want to make sure that we are really hearing those voices. So we're going to do the best that we can and move forward. And instead of focusing on what we don't have, we're going to focus on what we have.
Great, thank you. I have one other, I guess, comment as far as, you know, some of your suggestions and has been conversation for years and years about looking into our LGBTQ youth and their needs. I've heard a lot of children who are LGBTQ and do not feel represented. And also some families who aren't, don't fit into, you know, some of the stuff whenever you talk about reproductive health and DNA and, you know, family structure and inheritance and stuff. So I'm just, you know, just thinking broadly, right? And so I just encourage you all looking at updated policies as far as like the DEI Advisory Committee policy. as far as like the DEI Advisory Committee policy or even, you know, consulting with maybe some of those folks. And our transgender and non-binary students policy. Hopefully that'll help guide some of the, the work that you are doing and looking into what would be best based on our policies and our student population and being inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, you, you were talking about, you know, potentially some loss of some local data. And I appreciate that you're using, that there's going to be new data that would come from a K-12 survey of parents and students and community this fall. And so we'll have that fresh data. I also wonder if, if there is opportunity or if there is the inclusion of data, like for example, community mental health or public health data that relates to student behaviors and student needs as they approach the ages where they're learning about reproductive health and, and all the other components of sex education. So are there other pieces? Are there other professionals that, that we seek to have their expertise?
Yeah, so the, the SEAB is, is, has a very narrow focus in that we look at sex ed curriculum only. However, humanity doesn't exist within a vacuum, and our sexual relationships and our sexual identities encompass our emotional health and our social health and all those other pieces. So while we don't look at social emotional learning in particular, we do very much look at mental health percentages as it relates to the sexual health of kids, absolutely.
And then just one little addition to that. I think that's also why it's so important that when we look at the makeup of the SEAB is that it has community mental health professionals on there and health educators on there. And so they bring that information with them.
That comment is adjacent to my question about the SEAB.
Nice avoidance technique.
How long can we run the joke?
I'm just trying to be encompassing of all. Is the SEAB fully seated at this moment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Then you get a new board on June 23rd. Is there a complete rollover or do we have a lot of fresh faces? How does that work?
Go ahead.
So there would be an appointment process and an application process. At this point, those decisions have not yet been made, but I always believe it's important to have someone that brings a sense of history of where the group has been and where they're going. I think that's an important piece to continuing momentum and not having a full throttle stop with a new board coming on. So those decisions have not yet been made, but I do believe that's an important piece.
I absolutely concur about continuity. The 23rd year of this century.
Correct.
I did say June 23rd, but yeah, anyway.
There's a process laid out in the policy too.
Right, right. And I just, this is just also for anybody who's listening too. And you are required to report to this board annually, and this is it? No? I'm just curious about the number of times you need to report to us.
The program evaluation is required every two years to be submitted, so that has been done. And then we try to give you an annual update. I don't know if that's a legal requirement. We do, we do that as part of Celine area schools.
All right, super. And I guess the last one is, no, that would be it right now. Danielle Dross, did you say she's the new statewide director?
She's the new Mary Beano, yes.
Regional Director for WISD and LESA.
Perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I had a couple very quick things. So first of all, I'm just going to echo what my colleague said about the common ground. I really appreciate what you said and what you're trying to do there. The, the first question, I, so I, I listen to feedback, and so I guess these two are coming from feedback. So the first one is about consent. And, and we talked a little bit about this within the PPP curriculum, but I'm interested in gen ed also. Sometimes I get feedback from folks wishing that was more of a focal point. So I was just wondering, is that an example of something that you talk about incorporating down the road? Or what can we do? Like instead, instead of just looking at like a new curriculum overall, like do, can you look at pieces of that that can come back to us? Because that's one that I, I've heard a lot of feedback on.
Yeah, so right now the State of Michigan requires that we teach refusal skills. And the difference between refusal skills and consent is that refusal is a no, no, no thing, whereas consent is a yes, I consent to that. So it, it flips refusal skills on its head and makes it a, I am actively choosing to be part of this scenario versus I am pushing away something I don't want. Does that make sense? So right now we, we have refusal skills within the curriculum, but best practice is to teach consent. And consent is something that is already naturally taught to our kids through very developmentally appropriate ways, saying, you know, yes, you can borrow my marker. That is consent. Hey Joey, can I use your crayon when you're done? Yes, you may, thank you. That's a, that is a very developmentally appropriate, young fives, kindergarten, first grade, second grade thing, to learn to say yes to something or no, I'm not done with it, you can't use my marker. You know, so yes, short answer is yes, consent is very important. And yes, you can look at pieces of curriculum, you don't have to overhaul the whole thing. But we also, Celine prides itself on best practice. And so we want to make sure that any recommendations that come before you to the board are something that is reflecting best practice in the area of sex ed curriculum. We don't want to give a partial product for something that could be better and reflect best practice of the curriculum area. Yeah?
And I, I would concur with all of that. I think the only piece that I would add is so when we talk about reviewing of what our current curriculum is and the needs to update, it is pieces like that. It is pieces where we, we now know that active consent is something that's really important. And I hear that from the community as well. And because I believe the process for approving new curriculum is, is quite robust, sometimes our curriculum, like, can age itself. And so in the past, when we were focusing only on refusal and not on consent, it's important that we make sure that our, our curriculum is updated that includes those pieces.
All right, thank you. The other question kind of comes out of the experience with the PPP curriculum because the, the two public hearings, as you said, and the, the questions that we were asking here. So we like policy because that's our job. So we do have a, a pretty well-defined policy for the sex ed board. Do you all go through that? I know we talked about the student representative last year. Do you all go through the policy and kind of checklist? Like, yes, we have clergy, yes, we have X number of parents. And, and kind of what is that, that checklist or, or process within the committee? Since I'm not on that committee? Just understanding, how do you make sure that you're in compliance of school board policy?
So that is also, many of the things you're talking about is not just school board policy, but also state laws. So as this group came together, the very first thing we did at our very first meeting was review the laws, the policies that were relevant to our work together. So we had them posted, we all went through them, we asked questions. So we went through the makeup of the board. We also went through the relevant legal MCL laws that, that we have to follow through the Michigan School Code. Additionally, we took a look at the Celine area school district policies as well as the district commitment statements, like our DEI statement. So in, in addition to things that may not be policies, but they are district commitments in line with the district mission, we felt those were relevant as well.
Thank you, and state law. So yeah, absolutely agree. I just go to the policy because that's my little area. So that's very good. And, and I hope that that can continue because I know sometimes if you have turnover in the application process for next June, depending on how many legacy people you have that kind of know to do that versus incoming, you know, just hopefully mentor incoming members.
Yeah, and part of the application process is identifying what is your role in the community? So when I filled out my application, you know, it's my name, I'm a parent, I'm also a registered nurse. I, you know, I added all of those things. So I fit in two boxes. I'm a healthcare person as well as a parent. Largely I function as a parent in this role, but you can't put away the nurse from a nurse, there, it's always there. So that, that is very clear within the application process. And Steve, I believe you're the one who goes through and like color codes the whole thing. I'm not part of that process because I'm not part of admin, so.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, David.
Sure, thanks. A lot of my questions have already been addressed, but just to go back to the data question for a minute, not to, not to get too exacting, I guess. But just to clarify on the, on the MiFi data, the, the data note about the low response rate refers only to the 2019, 2020, 2020 data, correct? And those, those previous years had like normal response rates? I might, I'm putting too much, too much, too much on the spot there, but, you know, the...
Yeah, the response rate was significantly lower. And the MiFi data is, there's, there's no, it's not like journal article data where you have to account for a certain percentage of responses. We only get what you get.
Right.
And so you, we have a data person actually on the board right now who said you can assume that these numbers are higher because we have such a low data set. We don't make assumptions with data, we let the data speak for itself. But we are, MiFi is not beholden to a certain percentage of data. It is merely a snapshot in time of who showed up that day, who took the test that day.
But you have an idea of...
But we get an idea and a trend through, over time. Did that answer your question?
I, I think so. And, and these are Washtenaw County numbers, but do we also have access to the Celine specific numbers in order to, to make, you know, you guys make your decisions based on, you know, in, in terms of evaluating, because you're talking about evaluating our, our programming. So it makes sense to, to evaluate our programming based on Celine's, on what's going on in Celine, not what's going on in Washtenaw County as a whole, right?
I think it's important that we remember that we would never make decisions or recommendations based on one piece of information.
No, no, but, but if, if that's the, if that's what you're pulling out as kind of something to, to highlight, then it would make sense to highlight what's happening here, not what's happening.
So we'd want to look at as localized data as we have. And if we don't have localized data, then we spam, well, how close to it?
We do, we do have that localized data, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and, and then I would, I would just, you know, kind of amplify what everybody else has been, been saying in terms of since we're missing that MiFi data for seventh grade this year because of what happened, then it's really important to next year, make sure that we, we try to recapture some of that.
I would agree with that. When we participate in, in the MiFi, then we use that data.
For sure. So, yeah, so I think that was my only question, question. And thank you, thank you for the diligent work that you, you guys do and, and all this. I like the recommendations.
To clarify the survey data, when you take this, when you deliver the survey next year, that's going to be gathering local data from our community to be asking questions about such things as when do you think that the sex education curriculum should be introduced, at what grade level? There's going to be a lot of local data gathered there, which likely will give us quite a bit of good information as to what to do next for our sex education curriculum. The MiFi data is, it's still our local data gathered, but it's compared to county data as it relates to some of those questions. But this question, this survey line of thinking is more of, what are some next steps we need to take with our sex education curriculum based on what our parents are largely saying, our parents and guardians?
Correct. That is only one piece of information. And our K-12 Insight, the surveying will bring us lots of local information.
So would it make sense to also survey students at the same time that we're surveying parents?
That is the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, older students. We're not going to ask first graders about sex.
No, no, but middle schoolers, high schoolers.
Parents and teachers.
In a developmentally appropriate way.
Absolutely.
And just to further clarify, it's my understanding that MiFi is every two years an even year. So we would not have a MiFi survey next year, it would be 2024. So for secondary education in odd years, it's the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I believe. Okay, thanks, which is a little bit different.
So, so I have a question about, and I probably could just talk to you separately or at the meeting or whatever. But as far as the communication, you know, the board, you all bring recommendations to us on the curriculum piece. And, you know, we pass it or not. And so I don't know if you all partner with or communicate with the staff who are implementing it in that process. I want to bring up a couple of things. I know we've established legally that, of course, families can be notified. The State of, State of Michigan are notified about the curriculum and also option to review and opt out. So that should, I mean, that's legally the opt-out. However, as a parent, I, I was hoping that it would change, but I received an opt-in or an opt-out and that my, that that needed to be turned back in. However, the day, you know, the day of, it is curriculum, curriculum that is adopted. We, you know, have it. So I guess there, there, you know, the, I don't know if people, and you all probably don't, but just, just that communication, I think, is key. Another thing, this came up, actually, we, we had a public comment yesterday. And so I want to ask that. Whenever children are opted out, is there like a consistency about like what activities they may do? Is that per classroom? Just trying to get an idea, you know, as we talked about controversial issues, of course, that's the only component is, is the, the sex ed. And so I just wanted to, to kind of get how you are communicating and helping with, on the admin piece.
So that's a lot to consider. And I guess the one thing that I would remind you is that we are an advisory board. We simply advise, we don't police, we don't make sure that teachers are, are doing things. If, if something happens that you believe is against policy, I would encourage you to seek out your building administrator, report that, and, and go through those channels and that process, just like you would anything else. If you are unhappy about something that was happening with mathematics or, or what have you, to seek that process because we are not, we are simply an advisory board. So in terms of that, that, that is where I would leave that lie. So when things come up, I think if someone opts out, I believe that the administrator would work with that family for an appropriate, an appropriate alternate activity.
Thank you. Sorry, I just, in my particular situation, the teacher, when I asked some questions about that, sent me to you all and to the top and didn't have any building contact, so. I tried, I tried.
I, I just wanted to mention, and not necessarily to you, but to the, to our trustees and to, and to Dr. Latch, that as we, as we look at policies like 2240 that we discussed last night at the policy meeting, you know, sometimes things bubble to the surface and then we see like, oh, maybe we also need to look at, at other, at other things. And so one of the things that I took away last night is that while we have policy, there's also some need to firm up our administrative guidelines. And that can be supportive of a student who may be, or a teacher, actually. When a parent, when a parent approaches a teacher with the desire to opt out, what is the guideline for, or the procedure for how that goes? And I think that that can make things really transparent and really helpful for administrators and for teachers. So if we can come together, or as, as the administrators are reviewing administrative guidelines, that might be one area that could just make things, you know, run a little more smoothly for students.
Yeah, I think sometimes the, the bridge between policy and implementation feels really long. And I think at the building level is where those conver... And I think at the building level is where those conversations need to have. Because like Michelle said, we are an advisory board. We're not part of implementa, implementation of any policy.
Okay, all set? Oh, okay.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for, for, for your work on this committee. It is an easy work, so thank you. So your recommendation is, just to be clear, it's going to be October of 2022, you're saying? And we're going to survey middle school teachers, students and, because your recommendation is what? Is middle school teachers as well as parents and students. Is that correct?
Teachers and parents of current students and students old enough to have those, that survey.
But it's going to be middle school?
Middle school, high school, secondary.
Secondary, okay.
Well, really four through 12, because they're the ones who teach it. So, yeah.
Okay. And then based upon that, you have a recommendation in here about it being incumbent upon to evaluate, investigate current and new sex ed curricula. Is that the plan going forward? And can you give me like a little bit of a timeline, I guess, or a thought on that?
Well, it is the, our recommendations going forward, if you, if you go back to the what's next slide, that slide is a really lofty goal to be able to complete in the next one school year. That as we know, change is very slow. And if there are going to be changes that need to be made to the sex ed curriculum, it is a long process. So our main goal is data collection next year of our current stakeholders in Saline area schools. And then from there, we, it'll, it's either going to be a very clear path toward change or a very not clear double path of taking everything and pulling it apart into lots of little pieces. So the next step beyond the survey is data analysis, collection and analysis. And then from there, research, review and recommendation. The timeline is, it could be a year, it could be five years. I mean, it, it takes a long time to make change, for sure. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I know we're going to get questions on the survey. That would be my guess. So that would follow board policy for surveys within the district, which means it gets bubbled up to Steve for review and approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, and the district has a long relationship with K-12 Insight, which is going to really, really help in the survey process to make sure that it is Saline area schools appropriate, Michigan law appropriate, and our community appropriate.
And we will be, we will be following all of our practices, procedures and protocols that we have been following with surveying data.
All right. Michelle, you want to stay for another one? You can do three in a row. You tired of seeing me now? Musetta, it looks like she wants a partner. I don't know. Hat trick. Come on. Thank you.
I just want to end and say that Michelle has been a fantastic leader of this group. She has been able to create a real community within our board. And I want to thank you very publicly for everything that you have done for this group. It has, you have been an amazing, amazing leader. Thank you.
And thank you to Kristen.
Not, not like you're not busy with a whole building of your own. So, all right, thank you. Thank you both. Musetta, you've been so patient. Thank you. Our final scheduled report, this is, this is one of those months, this month and next month, where we only have one meeting and we're trying to get a lot done to prepare for next year and to close out this year. So thank you for being patient. Whenever you're ready, we are ready for our wellness committee update.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Absolutely. So I first want to get started with just kind of going over our membership and kind of our goals for this year. So while that's coming up, so essentially we had members to kind of represent our whole district. So we had teachers, administrators, social workers, students, parents, board members. So thank you for those who were on the committee this year. And then some other district staff members. So our district nurse, Karen Hervey, our director of food services, Larry DeAndrea, some examples of other district staff. And some, some goals for us this year, we're to really make sure that our practices in the district align with our board policy. And then also how can we support social, emotional learning and wellness this school year? And so the next, yeah, perfect. So with regard to our board policy alignment, what we did is we took, essentially the board policy is pretty clear about what they want to see right at the, in the district. And so we took each of those elements and we are putting together a draft of how you can, if you were to go throughout the district, where you would see that, what that looks like. So we've partnered with our PE teachers, food service department and nurses to get some details around that. So you can expect that that draft will be posted on our website by the end of August. And so we've been working on that, so we'll continue to work on that through the summer. That way it's in a good place for the website posting. So in terms of social, emotional support, a focus that we had was how do we support not just students, but also staff and families? And so we've put together a partnership with Still Waters Counseling. We did some focus work during the month of May. And then we also did a student support survey, so more surveys. But we wanted to kind of find out how students felt when they were in school. And we'll go into some more detail about what that survey looked like and some of the results that we had. So as I mentioned, we partnered with Still Waters Counseling during the mental health awareness month, which was May of this, you know, for this year. And so what that looked like was Still Waters, their staff so kindly put together a video on anxiety. And so this was called the ABCs of Anxiety, so they kind of went over what anxiety is, how does it manifest itself physically, how can you, what are some tips and strategies to manage your own anxiety? And then some tips for parents for how they could support their students when they're anxious. And so we, during the parent sessions that we had, we had two sessions, one in the middle of the day and one in the evening. They reviewed the video. Meetanak Paul, one of the co-founders, she also answered questions for parents on how to support their students with anxiety. So that was helpful. She also provided some additional resources for families, so book titles and online resources that focused on some mental health concerns such as things, if you have questions around ADHD, autism, depression, anxiety. She had this whole slew of resources, so we shared that with all of the buildings. So they could share and push out to their families if student, if teach, uh, parents, excuse me, wanted some more information. And then lastly, Mr. Jonathan Buckman from Still Waters put together a Zoom mindfulness session for our Saline middle school for their students and staff. And that was held in the evening. And from what Mr. Stimmick said, who's a member of our steering committee, shared that there were lots of, you know, questions. People were really pleased with the experience. There were probably families per Zoom screen, so maybe, I think there was about 11 or so, you know, people that joined, but there are lots of people and their families kind of sharing one screen, so that was good to hear. That was good and well-received. And so then with our student support survey, so, you know, lots of research out there that shares that if a student has at least one trusted adult, they feel more connected to school and they're likely to perform better academically. And so our social, emotional goal was to see, so how many of our students have a trusted adult, right? Could they identify somebody if they needed something? And so what we decided to do is put together a survey. So we administered that around end of April, May time. And so it was going to be a focus area for us for this school year. It was optional, so any of the results that we kind of go over in the next couple of slides are students that are self-reporting. And it was optional, so we had, you know, each of the buildings at that fourth through 12 level kind of gave the option for students to take the survey. So a couple of things, kind of go over the questions that I asked. So I did share this with families too ahead of time, but just so we have it all here in one place. So we wanted to know what grade students were in. We asked them in general, "How supported do you feel by the adults at school?" And then we asked, "Do you have at least one trusted adult at school that you can go to when you need help with a personal problem?" We gave some examples that way to guide some students, especially some of our younger participants. And then if yes, we wanted to get an idea of how many, right? So quite a few students had two or three or four, so it was nice to see that. But most students had at least one. And then we asked, "Which adult or adults would you typically go to?" So we wanted to get an idea of which sort of, what role, right, are students gravitating towards or think and identify as trusted adults? So is it teachers, counselors, social workers, coaches? Kind of gave you some examples just to kind of get an idea. And then lastly, we also, because it's anonymous, we wanted to figure out, so if a student didn't feel like they had a trusted adult, how do we help them in making that connection? So this is an opportunity for a student. If they wanted us to help them connect with somebody, they would share their name here. And so this was the only space that a student's name was asked for and it would be purely up to them. So students, if they wanted to, they could share, say, "Hey, you know, my name is so-and-so and I'd like to be connected with somebody." And so that raw data would come to our steering committee and then we can kind of go from there. And so we'll kind of jump into a little bit of the numbers. I won't go into detail, but essentially it just kind of gives you a breakdown. So like I said earlier, we focused on our fourth through 12th graders this school year. We had about 587 participants, so not a ton, but I think it was, it's a good place to start. You'll see that majority of the respondents were in our ninth and 11th grade, you know, grade levels. And so we thought that was interesting, so maybe what about ninth grade and 11th grade? Maybe people are more gravitated to trying to figure out finding trusted adults. We don't, you know, we'll kind of look into that maybe next year, but we thought that was interesting. And then the next piece is that first question. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see a bar graph. And it asks in general, "How supported do you feel?" So we felt really encouraged by the idea that around 87% of our students feel supported by an adult at school. And then 12.4% of students don't feel as supported. So some, you know, the seven, the 2.9% that say no, that's concerning. So hopefully some of those students shared their names, so we could connect them with somebody. But we felt like, we felt it was good to see that most students felt supported. So we're doing good work or we're heading in the right direction. And so one of the, so obviously, right, we have all this data, so what did we do with it? So as a committee, we, so as a steering committee, we were, we were given the raw data kind of in real time. So we were able to kind of track and see what input students were sharing, right? Which students wanted to be connected with other adults? So you were able to look at that. And then for our last committee meeting with the whole district members, we kind of looked at just some trends and things that we saw. And then the names of the students that were seeking a trusted adult, I shared those names with building principals. That way they could connect them with an individual there. So those names were shared with building principals. Some of the principals shared, replied back that some of those students had already been on their radar. So that's helpful too, that they're still trying to make those connections and there's some consistency there. So we felt good about that. And then some of our takeaways, like I mentioned earlier, we did feel really good that we had a high percentage of students that felt like they had a trusted adult. But also, like I mentioned, with 587 students representing fourth through 12th grade, we'd like to get more representation. So we thought about how we, you know, how much time did we give to kind of advertise or market the survey? To make sure students that they did want to participate and if they could, so looking at that. So how do we get more students to participate? Still be optional, but how do we get some more representation for that fourth through 12th? And then if there's ways to even include some of our lower elementary, how do we do that? And what does that look like? We kind of touched on that this year, but didn't quite get a chance to roll that out. So that way we represent the whole district and not just the fourth through 12th grade students. All right, and then lastly, so our goals for next year, we want to support staff and student connections to promote school unity. So during some of our wellness committee meetings, the students that were present did share this desire to connect with their teachers, even outside of the classroom, and possible to kind of build that, you know, human connection with them. We want to continue our efforts with ensuring students feel supported at school. And then lastly, we want to increase our focus on staff wellness too. So those would be the three things that we would like to look at for next year. And then I'd like to just thank all the members of the wellness committee. I appreciate the opportunity to work with them. I think we had, did a lot this year. It was a hard year in general. So I think what we were able to kind of accomplish, I think is a great foundation for us as we move into next year. And then any questions from the board? Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So thank you for your, for, thank you for your commitment to, to health and wellness. I would say that in this day and age, especially coming off of this particular school year, these things were more important maybe than any year I know personally in my career. So I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the focus on, on staff wellness. I, I think that go-to adult piece is a, is a big deal. And so do you have survey data specifically on how many students and that, like, had a go-to adult? Because I see the one about how, you know, how generally supported. By the way, I want to say how that affirms the, our staff, right, and the incredible staff we have. But do we have data specific on the go-to adult? And then I'm wondering, did we share that go-to data with the staff? Like with the staff members themselves? Because I, I know that's affirming for me as an educator and, and to seek out those students who didn't have those connections and what have you. So did we share that with them?
So the staff, they, we did not share this data with the staff as a whole. But I think that's something we could definitely do in the future, especially since we have the grade breakdown. So building principals can have that info and then that way they could share it. I think there was a balance of respecting the anonymity, right, of participants. I think that was a big piece. We were trying to balance that. But I think making sure that more people see the hard work that they're putting in, that's working is a good idea. So we can definitely do that. In terms of the data of like who is that trusted adult, yes, we have that. And I can pull that up. But essentially, we had about, I would say, over half or so, around half, had at least one to two, one and/or two to three people that they could connect with. So it was strong data in that sense.
How appreciative I am to your, for your commitment. Thank you.
Um, so, oh, sorry. So I was on the wellness committee. I'm no, no longer on there and Trustee Hayward is. And I know I was there from the beginning of your leadership. I know there was some transitions prior to that, but I think you've been doing a wonderful job for the meetings that, you know, I, I previously have been at. I think it's a great team that, you know, contributed. I know we have students who come and contribute and part of that. The Hornet, sorry, what's the team? I can't think of the team. Yeah, yeah, the, the student leaders and how, how you've pulled them in and, you know, with that partnership. I think that's wonderful. I noticed with, so I'm going to go back to the MiFi data that was, I don't know if that's something that you all use, plan to use. We've lost, again, our seventh graders did not take that. I know there's a lot of valuable health information that's gathered from those surveys. I know a lot of, so anyways, the survey that you did, I noticed here unfortunately that sixth, seventh and eighth grade. I don't know if they're those tiny strands. I did the calculation and, and so is that 0.9% was middle school?
Yes, we had, we didn't have, we had a small number of middle school students participating in the survey. So that was an area for next year for how do we get some representation at that sixth, seventh and eighth grade level? So I would say maybe like one or two students per grade. So that was something that we talked about as a, as a whole district wellness committee in our last meeting for how do we, you know, get some representation at the middle school? What are some things that we can do to be proactive about making sure that there's dedicated time, right, for taking the surveys? So for those who want to, at the high school, our schedule is set up in a way that is easy for that. Hornet time was a great way to kind of put up a QR code. And for those students that want to take it, it was there for them. And so as a team, that's definitely something that we talked about and have some plans moving forward. And we'll kind of still brainstorm when we kind of come back in the fall. If that way that group is represented.
And I see that fourth and fifth grade had a high number too. So maybe some of that communication at the top level. But yeah, I think that's such important data, you know, here, hearing, you know, just, just that age, right? And, and so I want to encourage you to do that sooner than later, you know, what you all can. So, thank you.
Um, just to build on that, I, I do think time is a, is a big factor, having two kids at the high school. I know that if you tell them to do it on their own, it's, it's going to be really tricky because our kids are so scheduled. And so providing time during Hornet time, for example, I'm sure contributed to the higher numbers at the high school. So I think time being, being critical for that. But I also can appreciate that it's, it's tricky when it's optional. So, so really creating an environment that supports students and, and so I appreciate that. I also just wanted to say, well, first I want to say thank you to you and your leadership on the team. I know that my own students benefit from your leadership on, on the wellness committee, but also at the high school. So I appreciate that. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight is that I am continually impressed with the partnerships in our community and the generosity of our community to, to really support, support with their expertise and with their resources. So I want to give another shout out to Still Water for the way that they support our students in and outside of school. And I just appreciate that they are so generous with their time and resources so that we can better support all of our students. So thank you for seeking out that partnership and continuing to maintain that partnership.
Yeah, absolutely. They were really wonderful to work with because I didn't have a ton of, like, they were really great at dinner- Yeah, absolutely. They were really wonderful to work with because I didn't have a ton of, like, they were really great at dinnering ideas. It was very much like, this would be great. What are some thoughts that you had? And so it was great to kind of partner with them. And they really planned a series of activities for all of our age levels. So that was really great to see.
Well, and I, just one thing that you noted, having had like personal, family, extended family, anxiety is just a really tricky thing for, for people to navigate because it's one of those invisible things. Invisible disabilities or difficulties that, that people have. And so oftentimes it's difficult for kids to understand that they might be dealing with anxiety. It's difficult for parents to understand that there might be some signs of anxiety. So I think involving experts and expertise from people who are in the field and who have the latest and greatest best practice research is just an extremely smart move for our kids.
Thank you.
I failed to recognize your, your promotion and new role when you came up here. So I wanted to say congratulations. I'm very excited to give you some eighth graders next year to help transition. Can have a few of ours. You can have three of ours. So thank you very much. I just had a clarification question. The draft that you're preparing for August that will go on the website, per policy 8510, that's, that's the document that we need every three years. Is that correct? So that's like the refresh and the, the new policy that has to be posted per law. So that's, that's kind of check in the box on that policy?
Yes, because there's a, yeah, yep, exactly.
All right, good. That's what I wanted here. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for waiting. I want to do a time check with the team because we are at 8:57 and we have a lengthy agenda. Do we need a 10-minute recess?
Yeah, support. We've been here through six.
So would anyone like to create a motion to recess until, let's say, 9:10?
I would like to make a motion to take a brief recess until 9:10.
Excellent, excellent. Christine Miller, thank you so much. Second, support. All right, Candace, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned until 9:10. Thank you. All right, everyone. Ready? Ben says good to go. We're live. Thank you for affording us that small break. Appreciate that. Moving on to our action items, please. I'd like to recommend a motion and move to approve the purchase of two model year 2023 IC clean diesel 77 passenger school buses at a combined cost of $248,214.00. And two 2018 IC CE clean diesel lift buses at a combined cost of $165,678.00 as recommended by Director of Operations Rex Clary.
I'd like to make that motion, make the.
Michael, thank you.
Support Susan Eastup.
Susan, thank you. Okay, discussion.
So this will be the 22nd new school bus, 21st and 22nd new school bus. Over the years, we have purchased used school buses. This is the first time we're going to do it three years off lease. This is a dealership bus coming from a, I guess, a, a dealership provided mechanic. So I feel good about the purchase of these three lift buses. And these lift buses are with air conditioning and of course the lift door. Normally they run about 25% more than a Jet Ed bus. So coming three years off lease, we're saving significant amount of money. And these will put us right in par in the same manufacturer that we're currently purchasing. And it puts us in good shape for next year, to start of next year with lift buses. Lift buses is one area that we're seeing an increase in students. And we need these for August 26th. So these will be delivered by August 15th. And the new buses will not deliver until after January.
Did you misspeak when you said three lift buses?
Two. Yeah, I'm sorry, two. Two, two. Sorry. Yes, I did.
I just have one quick question. It's, because we're doing this, and I appreciate like the budgetary forthright here. But how about with regards to like warranties and that type of thing? Like how are we covered there?
I did extend the warranties on these three, on the two lift buses for our normal five years beyond this point. So they will come with a five-year warranty on, same warranty that I get with all the new buses as well. Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting.
No problem.
I know we have a bulky agenda. Okay, so I have a motion made by Michael, second by Susan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 7-0. I, that's the first time I've heard the start of school date too. Like out loud. Let's not talk about that yet. Okay. Not, not, not ready yet. Still basking in the glow of the last days. I'd like to move on to action item B, please, and move to approve. I'd like to entertain a motion and move to approve the community education rental rates as submitted by Brian Puffer, Director of Community Education.
Motion, Gerbi.
Brad, thank you.
Support Jones.
Candace, thank you. Discussion. Thank you very much for waiting.
It's a little taller. Thank you for having me. Yes, last fall, we implemented a new facility software called Elio with the help of Mr. Ellis. It's district-wide, not just for community ed. So we've been using it since about September. It's been very successful. And so what we did is kind of looked at our rates that we've attached and have attached in there. And so our old rates, we had three classes and now we're going down to more of a streamlined process. And what we did is we looked at about 10 different districts, kind of see what everybody else is doing, which we do yearly usually, but to kind of see how, you know, they purchase their rates and what facilities they use. We looked at Dexter, Chelsea, Pickney, West Bloomfield, places that had comparable facility stars. And so as you can see in there, the first attachment, there's our current rental rate classification. And then the second one is our proposed. And so, as you can see in there, the first attachment, there's our current rental rate classification, and then the second one is our proposed adjustment and redesign rate sheet. Basically, we did this, like I said, to streamline the process for our staff and for the public. What we did, it was eliminated Class 1 on our proposed rate sheet and replaced it with Group A, which is all of our Celine groups. And then, one and two, or excuse me, two and three were replaced with B and C. So, there are some groups that we have that were A, or were one on our old sheet that would be going to B, and they will receive, it'll probably be to five to 10, possibly $15 increase, and depending on what they're renting on. There's not a lot of groups that fall in that area. So, we looked over that. We did adjust some rates, not much. We do look at those every year, but I'd say, depending on the facility and what, we're between the middle to the top in our fees for our facilities. And we've been renting our facilities where, you know, we started back in 2020 during the summer with our programs, and in that fall, we were allowed to rent out to other communities and whatnot. And so, we've been, I would say right now, this year for our fiscal year, we're probably pretty close to pre-pandemic for what we're doing with facility rentals this year.
That's a good nose.
Yeah.
Brad knows I like revenue generation, so.
Yeah.
Any, any comments or questions? I just had a little one. So, we have a policy, it's 9,700, I won't quiz you. It's, it's relations with special interest groups, and this has come up in the past, and I know Michael and I have talked about this a little bit when we've talked about things being distributed in the boardroom and rental, and rental spaces comes under this as well. And so, I would just ask that, that you work with Steve maybe to review any board policies about rentals. I know we're in an election year, and there are specific board policies around signage, what you do in facilities, in salarial schools, et cetera. So, I would just ask that you kind of review that and make sure we're compliant.
Yeah, definitely.
I, I'd like to add that one of the reasons it is important that we keep up with rental rates and increasing revenue is that our facilities are so tremendous. And we hear all the time about how well-kept our facilities are. People that come from other districts comment to me a fair amount, wow, your facilities are so nice. And that's a credit to the great work of our, you know, Rex and Kurt and Brian and making sure that these facilities are in, are in great shape. Therefore, I think it more than justifies a, a increase, especially with sign the times, you know, we're needing to charge more for a variety of services.
Yeah, I totally, totally agree. I thought it was a bargain when I looked at the rates for our facilities. And, yeah, shout out to the custodial crews as well that make, make them very nice.
Yeah, I would just quickly to say that for the reason we're able to do this is just because of support of the board, obviously, but honestly, with our, Rex is a great crew, the custodians, they do a great job. Obviously, they work well with us, we all work together, and so, we wouldn't be able to do this if we didn't have the support from everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a destination for a lot of local clubs and associations. Any other que, yeah, Jenny?
Just to piggyback on what you said, I think it was last week, the high school was on the news for a group from Canton, I think, drives all the way out here for their dance recital multiple nights in the week. And it just happened to be one of the nights the power went out because there was an accident. But anyways, it was just interesting to see on, on the news, Celine Auditorium, but to know that it is such a destination that people are driving 30-plus minutes to get here because the facility is so, so incredible. So, thank you to Rebecca Greve Driscoll and her staff, and to all the custodians and, and everyone who makes that happen. I know, I know our own dance studio uses it and most of the community studios, but also the surrounding areas are using it, too. So, bravo.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to say thank you again for the support because when, obviously, COVID hit, we were one of the first districts to open up our doors, not just our community, but surrounding communities. And we've kept some of those commu, those groups that decided to stay with us because we were open then, we were able to help them out, but we wouldn't be able to do that wasn't free, guys.
Thank you.
Brian? In the past, there have been some organizations that use our facilities free of charge. I mean, some of the Jazz Band, New Horizons, I think, is what it's called. They're, they're now paying fees.
There's a couple of them. We're working with them, though, too, certain groups that we've had, some of them we've grandfathered in for a little bit. And so, some of these fees are, the fees stay their effect of July 1st, but some of our groups that have been with us, we are working with them and making sure that they're still able to operate as they have in the past.
Because some of their savings, they've gone into scholarships for, for students and that sort of thing. So, it's like, it works for the district. So, you're well aware of them and that situation.
Yeah.
And I, I really appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, yeah, we are. We, like I said, we have those, we've talked to them. So, a lot of the groups we know that may have been transitional, but we've already been in talks with.
Yeah, I can, I can add a little legacy finance committee thing there. So, before COVID hit, Scott was actually talking with a lot of the different groups about a year in advance, having them prepare for some, some increases. And then, of course, everything, everything changed. So, it's kind of like resetting that, but for three years, the expectation has been that, that there is going to be some increase in fees. So, it's just kind of getting back to that and helping people out and getting to those levels. So, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions or comments, I have a motion from Brad, second by Candace. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to action item C, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the food service management contract renewal with Chartwells for the 2022-2023 school year as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owsley.
I'll make that motion, Miller.
Jenny, thank you.
And McVeigh will support.
Michael, thank you. Any discussion or anything? Miranda says, "Good to go." All right. Any comments, questions for Miranda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. She has talked a lot today. In, in finance and in the budget hearing. Moving on to item D, I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to adopt the amended General Appropriations Act for 2021-2022 Final Amended Budgets, the 2022-2023 Original Budgets, and the 2022 L-4029 Tax Rates as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owsley.
So moved, Jones.
Candace, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. I'm assuming no one has any other questions or comments since we had a budget hearing? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to discussion items, Vice President McVeigh with our policy committee update.
Thank you. You, you built up anticipation this morning in one of your emails to us all that we were looking forward to hearing about last night's meeting. So, here we go. Which usually doesn't happen. So, yesterday evening, I'm going to have to read this, I won't be able to make eye contact, so. Thank you. Last, yesterday evening, the Policy Committee convened to begin discussion of one of the final items on our running agenda for the year, Policy 2240, Controversial Issues. As a reminder, the Policy Committee consists of myself, Trustees Eastep and Miller, as well as Dr. Lott. At both ends of the meeting, we heard from about 12 members of the community in total who expressed their concerns with the policy as it is currently written. The, the comments reinforce my own thinking that there are four key elements of the, of that policy that need review. I don't, would just leave it at that. So, number one, the title of the policy and the general use of the term controversial issues is problematic on many, many levels and for many, and for a variety of reasons. And we heard that time after time from members of the community. Secondly, the issue of allowing parents to opt their students out of classwork is a mechanism that many, but not all, parents in attendance wish to see maintained and clarified. The terms vague and murky were raised, and administrative guidelines will clearly be impacted. And Trustee Miller already alluded to that a bit earlier today, tonight. Number three, the process of approaching the teacher, a teacher, to raise concerns in a way that is both respectful and timely needs review. And in the same respect, there needs to be, or the need to inform parents when possible of occasional classwork that might be uncomfortable for a variety of reasons also needs to be adjusted or addressed. And finally, number four, the procedures for implementing how an opt-out happens so students are respected and not ostracized, and similarly, so teachers do not face too great a burden to generate alternative assignments. There were other issues raised, but without diving into details in this brief report, as a result of our discussions at the table, we determined not to let slide a deep review of this policy. And we also determined to call in more voices to the discussion beyond the Policy Committee, including Kara Davis of the Teaching and Learning Team, Molly Garcia of Student Services, members of the DEI Committee, and many other community voices and viewpoints. Trustees Miller and Eastep have already done a great deal of research in the course of our review of documents, and they'll continue to work on the policy. We did find potentially helpful policy language and strategies from as far away as Ellington, Connecticut, and as close as Dexter Community Schools and Novi, as well as ideas already well-established in our own policies that Trustee Eastep pointed out last night at the meeting. So, I personally want to thank everybody who was there, who shared their views last night in a, and I'm looking forward to sharing progress in the weeks ahead as we, as this policy evolves. So, thus endeth my report.
Thank you. That was comprehensive. And as, as the trustee team knows, we had some board emails about this with varying perspectives that kind of hit on each of these four. So, I appreciate, because you, I think you answered most of my questions and what you just said. The only question that I had is, you said it was a running policy and kind of the last checkmints. How, how, how did this come to be? Like, I know when we usually review a policy, there's a rationale and process that we follow. How did this one end up on the plate?
Well, there, as for any policy that comes up for revision and contemplation, 0131.1 is our policy about making policies. Any board member can bring something on the table to put something on the agenda for discussion. There are still other items that haven't yet been discussed, and I'm hoping that we'll get to those in the fall. For, for myself, it's the board operating procedures. We need to figure out a process for updating and revising those, for example. I, I know our trustee Eastep can add some details about how this one in particular came on, but it is not the first year that it has been on the agenda of the Policy Committee. We have talked about it, we talked about it before, well, over the, since my first term on the Policy Committee, which was five and a half years ago, it has popped up. And it, it, we have put it aside over the years. There have been conversations, and there's been research, and Trustee Eastep has done a great deal of research in the intervening years. But we are at the point now where we really have to move on this, and we've reached a, I hate this word, a synergy. We, we, we've reached a point where, a nexus point, which we're, we're going to move on. So, Trustee Eastep, do you want to elaborate on that as to how, where it came from?
No, I, I didn't even know the five, five-plus years thing. That's inside, we could talk about that later.
Oh.
That, a long time ago.
As I mentioned last night, when we moved from MASBs of policies to Neolas, we, we looked at every single policy.
Yeah.
And that was one of them.
Yeah, and, and my start in 2019 is when I was first introduced to this policy from Superintendent Graydon and Paul Heineck, who was the chair at the time, who brought it to us for removal. So, that's, that's the first time that it came to, Michael was on, McVeigh was on that committee as well. It came to the table not for any sort of vote. There was discussion about changing that title. I don't know if, I think it was just the three of us, if you recall that. But it, I don't know what happened after that change of language.
And part of the issue is that, to a person, we said the word controver, the phrase controversial issues was outdated and irrelevant. And it's been around in the Neola policy since 2003, and probably before that in one form or another. But then, the whole policy got conflated with the idea of opting out and, and challenging materials. And, and I think at the time, three years back, four years back, five years back, we just didn't have the stomach for it. So, we moved it ahead, but we have some brave, brave members on the Policy Committee this year who have decided we are going to address it once and for all. And, and with the help of the community, we will do so.
Just one more thing. The past two years, not this year, the previous two years, when I was Policy Chair, it was always on my running list, you know, that, that people who are on that committee are aware of. And additionally, came up in a conversation with Thrun, who did not support it, but I've never been able to, to get that in writing, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to add that the policy meeting, it was not recorded. We don't record those meetings. So, we did have a number of community members come last night and share, as Michael stated, community, public comment and feedback. I do think that they're just seeing it on the agenda that was posted publicly. There were some assumptions made, and, and people thought that the board was going to take, take swift action or, or move in a certain direction. And I hope that what the community heard and, and what was the feeling as we all left last night is that bottom line, we want to make sure that for students who are participating in curriculum or not, through the opt-in or opt-out options, that it is a fair and equitable process that is, that has procedure and administrative guidelines, so that when those things come up, teachers are supported in how to implement. Parents have parental rights and the ability to make decisions for their individual children, and that students are supported, and no one is made to feel ostracized, stigmatized, or penalized for making choices.
And, and we have heard stories. So, if I, that, that is exactly what's happened in the past. And if I could just add one, for me, an overarching concern I have for this is respect, respect of the parents, respect of the students, respect of the teachers, respect of the people who have to implement the policy. And it, just an, just an overall respect for the people engaged in the curriculum that we were, were trying to present to our students.
Yeah, a, a big point that came up was working with, so when, when we talk about conversations that we've already had in policy, but with diversity, equity, and inclusion, the advisory committee, this has come up multiple times over the years. I'm not sure where, I think there was a conversation with the Leadership Coalition, and I'm not sure where that went. But, you know, being mindful of what policies we've already have. And so, I know there's interest whenever we do hire someone in a position, in the position equity and inclusion curriculum, something, something. Sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. So, so anyways, you know, hopefully, a partnership on, on that level to make sure that we're not just removing an entire assignment and text that is representing, representative of someone in that classroom or their peers. And so, you know, that, that's something, like, how do you, how do you balance that? You know, is it one conversa, you know, a parent, you know, the teacher and the parent versus, like, the entire class being impacted? And so, I think that's, you know, su, super important to, to say, hey, I want this for my child, and that's okay, right? But, yeah, to, to take it away from everyone defeats the purpose of, of what, what SAS stands for. So, you know, we want to make sure that that's, that, that will be, yeah. And, and I think the people in the audience, audience, people who, who spoke and, you know, I, I, we said that we were gonna, we want all of their voices at the table. And so, I'm excited to move forward with that.
I was very proud of our community last night. So, thank you very much to anyone, everyone who was there and spoke up. And thank you.
All right, are you having, we were discussing this in finance, I'm not going to steal your thunder. Are you having a July policy meeting?
No, but, I mean, anyone can call a meeting if it.
Right, but you don't, you don't have a schedule?
We're not anticipating one, next one will be August.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So, no updates?
The truth is, we're going to be meeting every third day from here until November.
No. No, you're not. No, you're not. Okay. I was asking for agenda setting, but. I was asking for the public and for agenda setting. All right. David, Brad, Candace, Steve, any, any other comments, questions?
I, I knew I'd get.
Yeah, Candace?
I just had a quick question. If you all have, I know you're not meeting again until August, but did you all talk at all about what that timeline roughly might look like in terms of engaging the other groups? You mentioned DEI and some others.
Well, thank you, that's a great question. Just before this meeting started, we had a very, we. Just before this meeting started, we had a very, we sorted out a few issues really quickly, and we're going to have a conversation about, you know, if I can offer any suggestions moving forward, but I, I know that, I would like the trustees, Eastep and Miller, to, to take the lead on working with the community and the various groups out there. They've done a lot of research, I've done research, they got all my notes, we've got notes from the community, and we'll, we'll leave it at that, but they'll work out a timeline, and perhaps we can ask in a month's time, hey, there's an update, how's that going?
And I, and I think it is our desire to have something at least solidified by the time new trustees might be appointed to policy, so, so that we could do this work and work with other stakeholders, so that we could, so that it doesn't happen what has happened before, that when there's a turnover of the policy committee, that it, it dissipates.
And, and I know that we don't have administrative guidelines, and that's in process, so I don't know if there's one associated with that, so hopefully, I mean, because we're at this point, we're, we're, we'll be looking at possibly revising the current one, possible new ones, or.
I'm sorry, Susan, can you just clarify? So revising what, the policy or the administrative guidelines?
Policy.
The pol, the quote controversial issues, okay, perfect.
Right, yeah. I don't know if that, yeah. So.
Okay.
We have a, yeah, there are a lot of ideas floating around that I've heard. We can fill a bingo card with, with, and I'm, I'm almost, well, anyway, we'll.
All right. Moving on to our next topic, finance committee update, treasure Gerby.
It's a quick update. First of all, I want to acknowledge the team tonight, right? Like, June is kind of like our, our big, you know, time and all of that, and I want to, I want to thank the, the people on the finance team, and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Miranda Housley is incredible. She really leads us in a, in a great way, and she is on top of things, her forecasting is, is top-notch, and we really, really benefit from her stewardship. So I want to make sure that I say that out loud, and how much I appreciate you and, and the team appreciates you. Okay? When I look at our, our budget, and we, we looked at it, you know, there are a few things that, that kind of quote-unquote have my, my, our focus, if you will, and I just want to highlight those real quickly for us, and then we've done enough on finance tonight. But number one, like, you know, as far as talent goes, right, like, just like anywhere, we're paying more for goods and services, and we want top-notch tal, top-notch talent, so we're going to have to be competitive for that talent. So that's number one, that kind of comes to the forefront for me, right, is, is we're, we're realizing the incredible talent of our people. And, and, and so that's number one. Number two, energy costs and the way that they are rising is, is a significant item for our budget, and it's something that we are going to have to just be continuously mindful as a team, as a district, all of it. And then the third thing that stands out on the budget for me is our incredible reliance on the importance of technologies moving forward, right, with our budget. Coming, you know, post-COVID kind of brought technology to the forefront of, of education, right? And our staff was innovative, and we're going to, we're supporting that. And, and so when you think about fiber, you think about devices, you think about the things that are, are there to support that technology, it's a really important thing, and it's something that's, that's a real, it's a, it's a bigger part of our, our budget, and it should be. So those are kind of things that catch my, my focus, if you will, as, as the leader, as the chair of the team. And, but thank you for your commitment, thank you for your guys' trust, and I think that our, I think our financial position is strong, and that doesn't just happen, and I've already thanked her, but thanks again.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Any questions or comments for Brad or for the committee? Okay. Moving on to administration updates, Dr. Latch. Ooh, I don't have any tonight either, so we just got through two. Anyone else? Oh, and we're missing Julian, but normally this would be when he goes. But Jenny, do you have updates?
I want to just go really, really quickly. So first, congratulations to the class of 2022. This is our first meeting since then, so it was, I know, an activity that, that all of us really enjoyed participating in, and it's always, it's always something really incredible to see the graduates crossing the stage, and, and a special notable, a special notable note this year was Officer Gassoay being there, and just the, the reaction of the students to, to him being able to hand, shake their hand as they came, came up on the stage. So beautiful evening, thanks to all who coordinated that. I would be remiss if I didn't say Lori Dawson, because she was there really on her radio coordinating everything and making sure everybody had what they needed, so appreciate that. Also, I know the retirees left, I just want to say, many of them, as I was looking at their years of service, it's getting closer to my start date, my, my career as a teacher, but many of those who were there were mentors who became friends, who, who became like family. I know Kurt mentioned Mary Williams, but Mary Williams not only cared for my kids, but she made the birthday cakes. And so just congratulations to them and kudos. Lastly, I just want to say that I, along with some others, was able to attend the city council meeting last week, and the city council, in collaboration with Moms Demand Action, made a proclamation for the city to their commitment to end gun violence. And one thing that came from that meeting that I just would like to say in this public forum is that if you have, if you have a gun at your house and it needs to be locked, you can go to the dispatch counter at city hall to the police station, and they will give you the num, whatever number of locks you need to keep your weapon safe at home. It's a small step, but it's one that is extremely important, and so I just wanted to, to recognize that tonight.
Thanks, Jenny. Well said. It was a good, a good event and good community bridge. Yeah, Brad?
I want to reiterate that, I'm wearing orange for that very reason tonight, right, Moms Demand Action, I was really proud to be able to, to give my support to, to that resolution, right? And I was so proud of, of our team for, for being present there and for, for joining together, right? Like, that's, it's great when I, when Celine communities can come together, right? And recently I read about, I don't want to read the whole thing, but about a P, the PTA, right? We met, we saw our PTAs and PTOs tonight, and they even have a position statement as, as well on gun safety and, and violence, violence prevention, and I'll save all the, because I, I agree wholeheartedly with it. But I'm excited to see that there was some legislative potential movement, and I could tell you as an educator, this is long, this is long-desired and something that is important. So, thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Susan?
Oh, just to add to that, I know one of our Celine students was at the March for Our Lives in Lansing, so I think that's wonderful. I think we should be listening to those little voices, especially, not just us, but our legislator, our lawmakers. So, yeah, I thought that was kind of cool that the student was there and stood up there and also spoke.
I'm personally, oh, sorry, go ahead, Candace. I was going to say, I'm, I just have three things to add. I'm personally sorry that I wasn't able to attend that, and I'm really happy that it had been there. The first school I taught at in Tucson, almost two days before I arrived, experienced a school shooting in front of the school. And at the University of Arizona, we had three, three killed, two professors and the, and the shooter. And so we, I lived through that, I know what that, what that can do to a community, and I also know that these horrible incidents can bring a community together. I just hope we don't have to figure that out for ourselves someday. If I can add on a brighter note, I was a judge, we have a lot of mini inventors here in this district, and I was a judge at the National Invention Convention that was held at the Henry Ford, and one of the, the pods, the kids that I judged for eighth grade went on to play second place for a, a drone controller, which, not that I had any bias there, a one-handed drone glove, you know, you tilt the hand, and this is for, for, for a variety of reasons, sometimes you only have one hand, the other's for, you know, beverage, I guess, while you're flying your drone, Coca-Cola. Yeah, but in any case, it was a wonderful experience, and I hope that more and more of our students here at this district get involved with that sort of thing. And finally, if I, you shouted out to class of 2022, let me shout out to class of 2029, when they did their clap out, I was, I took, I took about 400 photographs, and it was a wonderful experience. Even if I didn't know it was coming up, I would have heard it and come over to say, what the heck is going on here? Because I'm right across the street from Heritage, it was a great experience, and wonderful way to walk these fifth graders into middle school, and some of you have gone through that experience and yourselves, and I, what, I don't think I had anything like that when I was going from fourth to fifth, and, and so I thought it was a wonderful experience for the kids, so thank you for everyone involved.
Hi, Light, I'm going to say one short thing. I wanted to say I was very proud of David speaking at the flag raising for our city for pride. You did an excellent job, and I was happy to support, so I just did want to add that. All right? Yeah, no problem. Oh, Candace, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I was actually going to mention that as well and say happy Pride Month, and then also mention Juneteenth, the City of Celine, well, City of Celine raised the flag for, for Pride Month, which is great, so if you haven't seen that, go check that out, and that's where David spoke. But also, the City of Celine D E I committee is really encouraging the community to go out and support YPSY's Juneteenth celebration, so Ypsilanti, their D E I is hosting a large event on June 19th, so just encourage you to look that up, that is on the City of Celine D E I page, more information about that. That's it?
Okay. All right, Susan?
I guess I'm going to add, I thought about the, the Pride flag raising June 5th as well, and my kids were running around like it was a mess. So, but I, you know, I was happy to, to see trustee Hayward speaking, and also the youth that came out to raise the flag and had the opportunity to speak as well, and that was really powerful. And also wanted to recognize the youth who didn't feel safe to come, whether they're not out, or their parents aren't supportive, or, you know, I, I just want to recognize them as well, and hopefully people felt represented and, and see that whenever they passed, passed the city hall, and, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And we did reach out to those students to come and make a few comments, I don't think it worked out, so we'll give them the summer to enjoy themselves. Moving on to consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize items A through I as part of the consent agenda. So moved, Miller?
Jenny, thank you.
Support, Gerby.
Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Item scheduled on our next big agenda.
Not as many presentations, we, but we do have two important ones. One is going to be called Superintendent Listening Sessions and D E I Next Steps. And then the second one is a Teaching and Learning Update for Continuous Improvement, and that'll be led by Cara Davis, the Teaching and Learning Team.
All right, perfect. And just a reminder for everybody, we have one meeting in July, we have no finance meeting, and we have no policy meeting at this time. Now, is there a second opportunity for public comment? Member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. All previous rules do apply, and Secretary Jones will show the yellow card at 30 seconds left and the red card at, at the full three minutes. J P Denover, is that, did I pronounce that correctly?
DeNoyer.
Okay, DeNoyer, De, DeNoyer, thank you. Whenever you're ready, and just make sure you toggle the microphone for the green light to be on, please.
So hello, ladies and gentlemen, or at least those who stayed through the end of the meeting, the marathoners. My name is J P DeNoyer from Ann Arbor. I'm a programmer for Tiny Light Technology, which was invented here in Celine. And I work full-time for, as a programmer for a company in Dearborn. I visit my dad every week at the evangelical homes where he is taken good care of. I had the honor to participate in the fundraising event a few weeks ago and met, met Ms. President, Mr. McVeigh, and Ms., Mr. Latch. At that time, I did not have money to give, but I have technology and volunteer time. You may call me a computer geek, but I hope to be a great teacher like all of you, and I hope more students could have a chance to work at NASA as I did several years ago. Maybe we could get some NASA-sponsored projects here at Celine area schools. One project is the Celine Area Light Tower. I helped create the software for SALT Tiny View. Earlier, I delivered a few pages about the SALT initiative to, to, to council members. I hope to, hoping to bring this new and ambitious technology into the classroom for teachers and students, but more importantly, to give younger sixth-to-trobb graders a tool to learn, innovate, and imagine, and build for now and the future of Celine and the world. Please let us know if we can help with guidance for a project such as SALT, which is student-led and guided by the four Cs, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and communication. Above all, creativity is pointing to the east. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
Ms. President, can I yield? Just a few seconds, I think 30 seconds left, and I just had a few words.
Actually, we don't do that in our policy, but, but you, you are more than welcome to, to come back another time. We don't yield time in, in the school district, it's just not part of the public participation policy, but thank you for asking. And I do have Ray Lynn, who is waiting to go next, if you're ready.
So I kind of wish my phone had dunged, dinged, this would be for the meeting. So I'm actually calling about your vote to join, renew your M S A B membership. It was just, I'll go and add, it was just announced that Nebraska has now left the National School Board Association, that is 25 states who have chosen to leave this association over the comment and about, I'm trying to find the quote here quickly, about basically the letter, according to parents, that describes, sorry, the letter that said that parents who speak up can be considered domestic terrorists, and it has been proven that this was, letter was initiated from the co-chair of the National Association School Board member, and they led this direction, which has come out that many parents took offense to. 25 states have left the National Association of School Boards over it, Michigan has not, and so in, I guess, association, you are, just voted to be part of association who, who feels that parents should be considered domestic terrorists when we disagree with school boards. And obviously, I consider myself one of those parents, because I disagree with many things, but not all. So hopefully you guys will take that into consideration, and maybe even rethink that your associations have an effect, and it says what the school thinks, and, and you guys are associated with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on July 12, 2022, here at 6:30 PM. I would now like to actually modify the agenda, I'd like to please entertain a Um, I would now like to actually modify the agenda. I'd like to please entertain a motion to remove item two superintendent evaluation under section eight A, uh, from this agenda and I will place it on the July agenda, um, instead. This is due to time, uh, and focus on item number one, uh, the security planning.
I, do you want a motion or do you want a support of your motion?
I, if you can do the motion, that would be great.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to move the, um, is it quarterly?
Yep.
Superintendent evaluation discussion to the July, um, agenda.
Thank you Jenny, second.
Support, Kirby.
Oh, I heard Michael first, sorry. Uh, either, okay, we're giving it to Brad. Um, alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries seven zero. So we are deleting, um, and moving number two on closed session. I'd now like to please entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 9:56 PM. Uh, with a rea- with an intent to reopen, open session at approximately 11:00 PM for the purpose of, for a school board to consider security planning to address existing threats or prevent potential threats to the safety of, of the students and staff under section 8K of the Open Meetings Act. So moved, Jones.
Candace, thank you for the motion.
Support, Esta.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Um, as we go into closed session, I will note that there is possible business after, uh, after close. Um, we are in recess and closed session. If I could have the mics off and if we could clear the, oh, might have been already. And if we could clear the room, please, we are in closed session. Thank you.
At 11:06, a motion to reenter open session of the regular Board of Education meeting was made by trustee Miller. It was seconded by secretary Jones. I'd like to now call for a motion, please, to adopt the emergency operations plan for Salina area schools as submitted by superintendent Lodge, last revision date of January 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Michael, thank you.
Support.
Miller. Jenny, thank you. This will have no discussion because it was discussed in closed per OMA.
We can, we can discuss on a base level, right? I thought we were looking at a different date here.
Yeah, that's what I'm a little confused about the date.
Yeah, we said, we said today's date with the director.
So what I heard is that we were going to adopt today's, that, that we wanted to adopt today's, which, or I'm sorry, the packet that's in front of us, January 31st, 2020, and that for our July close session, we'd be receiving an updated document with some title changes, and then we would readopt it then.
That way it's, that way it's approved, we have an EOP, or sorry, an EOP ready to go.
That's right.
In existence.
But the, the document is March 8th, 2022.
Well, it was last updated.
The, the content of the EOP was last updated January 31st.
The motion is to approve that I, that I made.
That you made, yes, and I'll, and I'll, I'll keep my support. This packet.
Yeah, this one, this packet, that date, and we're going to update it later.
That's correct, that's correct, because we don't have the revisions in front of us. Okay, perfect. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay.
Because of the date discrepancy.
Okay, hearing one, motion carries six one. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for Salina area schools at 11:11 PM.
So moved, Kirby.
Brad, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. We are adjourned.